Town website and on the bulletin board of the town offices at 10th Front Street on November 7th. As provided in that public notice, the public may access the meeting online and via phone. And we remind folks that the usual rules of conduct and decorum apply. Please note that all votes taken this evening will be done so by roll call. And I'll start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance, introducing the select board. When each member states their presence, please also state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, and who that person is. Good evening, Select Woman Rantriolov.
I am home in my room alone.
Great, thank you. Good evening, Selectman Brown.
Good evening, I'm in the salt cave and alone.
Terrific, thank you. Our Clerk, Select Woman Julie Gilman. Who's muted?
Good evening, I'm in my home and I am alone.
Good evening. And our Vice Chair, Select Woman Molly Cowan.
Hi, everybody. I am so sorry for my tardiness. I was happily on another board meeting and thought we started at 6:50, so I'm so sorry.
That's okay, thank you. With us too, we also have our Town Manager Rustine.
Good evening, all.
Okay. Before we get into our regular agenda, I would entertain a motion from the Board to entertain, to enter into a non-public session under RSA 91A, colon, 3, Roman numeral 2, small lowercase a in parentheses.
So moved.
Second. Give a motion a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Select Woman Rantriolov.
Aye.
Select Woman Cowan.
Aye.
Selectman Brown.
Aye.
Clerk says aye, Mr. Chair.
Aye. Before we move into non-public session, just the formality of the virtual, how we're doing this virtually. Mr. Dean, correct me if I'm wrong, we're going to exit this meeting and Mr. Dean will send us a new Zoom invite for the non-public session. We'll enter that. And once we move to adjourn from that, we'll come back to the regular meeting, is that correct?
That's the plan, yes.
Okay, alright. So at this time, the Board will be moving into non-public session.
We're all here.
We're all here.
Oh, okay. We're all here? See, Daryl.
Yes. Mr. Chair, I would like to make a motion to seal the minutes of a non-public session of November 9th, 2020.
Okay, so motion. Motion second, any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Selectwoman Roundtree Olaf.
Aye.
Selectman Brown.
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan.
Aye.
Clerk says aye. Mr. Chair?
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Okay, and then do we need a motion, Madam Clerk, to go back to our regular meeting, or can we just start in?
No, we can just start in.
Start in, okay. Welcome back, everybody. We've returned from non-public session. Our first order of business this evening is meeting Kami Switzer, who's sent a statement of interest in applying for the Open Human Services Committee spot. So I saw you earlier. Good evening, Kami.
Hi, everyone.
Welcome, and thank you for your interest in the committee. What we'd like to do is we've reviewed your application, your resume, but just have you take a couple of minutes to tell you, tell us about yourself and your interests, and then we could ask a couple of questions and move on from there.
Yeah, sounds great. So thanks for hearing me tonight. My name is Kami Switzer. I have lived in Exeter for about three years. My husband and I bought a duplex last year here in town, and we're super excited to be here full-time forever. I currently sit on the Mission in Action Committee at the Congregational Church in Exeter, and much of our work is around funding area nonprofits. I am a social worker by trade, currently leading a, I guess, child-focused coalition in Manchester out of the Federally Qualified Health Center. And most of my work has been in in social services and in trying to get people access to the benefits and supports and services that they that they deserve.
Thank you. I'll open up the, any questions from the board to Kami? Selectwoman Cowan.
Hi, Kami. We go to the same church, and I apologize so profusely for being late today. I just wanted to know if you've been able to observe any of the meetings or know when they are?
I don't have any idea. That's a great question.
It can be a little bit of a heavier lift, and I'm so glad you're volunteering. I just want to make sure that you're, you know, aware of what you're volunteering for. Not that you shouldn't do it, because I'm sure you can fit it into your schedule, but just wanting to make sure that you are aware that it's a little bit of a heavier lift sometimes during one particular, the budget season, and then it's okay.
I am child-free, which benefits me in this particular instance in that most of my evenings are free. So I suspect it would be okay.
Wonderful. It might be during the debate. I don't remember when it meets, but just great. That's great.
Any other questions? Selectman Brown.
Just curious if there's anything that sort of an issue that sparked your interest or inspired you to volunteer.
That's a really great question. I think I think that there wasn't a particular issue. We recognize at the church and in my work in Manchester that housing is a really serious challenge, and too, that persists in Exeter with lack of affordable housing and lack of available just units in general. So I suppose that is something that is that is feels passionate for me. I feel like if we want to retain people in this community, like we need to provide access to things like that. And I know that that's not necessarily something that human services would look at funding, but certainly keeping it in in the back of our pocket for when things arise that we can get behind, I suppose.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Kami?
Yeah, I'd actually like to make an observation more than a question in that to speak to your housing issue, because of the pandemic, there have been a lot more requests for the Human Services Department to provide, you know, hotel space or some temporary space for individuals or families. So that is something that's going to be a big discussion for you this year in that in that committee.
Thank you. Selectwoman Roundtree Olaf? Okay.
I'm also. Thank you.
Thanks. I appreciate your your interest, Kami. I can remember several years ago when I was on the Budget Recommendations Committee, and this was a recommendation that we made to the Select Board at that time was to form this committee. And it's a lot of work. It's important work, and I'm just, I'm very grateful that you're interested. The one question I have is for Mr. Dean. Mr. Dean, are, is this committee meeting regularly now because of budget season?
So they're actually a very efficient committee. They've, it only usually takes them a couple of times to go through the applications, because Pam takes them all in, writes the letters, coordinates with the Human Services Funding Committee, and then gets all of the applications in order, sends them back out, and then the committee has time before they meet to meet, and then they meet and go through them. I think longer term, one of the things that we were hopeful for would would be that this committee wasn't going to just be a funding committee, but be one that could sort of ongoing, on an ongoing basis, meet with our human service agencies and their representatives. So that's something that's a goal, I know, but, you know, we'll try to get there as we can get there.
Thank you. So Kami, we will take this up for consideration at our next meeting on November 23rd, at which time we'll vote to appoint you.
Super.
Thanks so much for your time tonight, and thank you for your interest.
Thank you, everyone. Take care.
Thanks. Good night.
Good night.
We'll now open it up to public comments. It's an opportunity for the public to weigh in with any comments. We do ask, though, that if your comments are relative to anything on the agenda, that you wait until that agenda item comes up. So I'll open it up to public comment, and I'll pause for a moment to see if there are any hands. Okay, seeing none, we will move on from public comments. Well, now to the point our agenda for proclamations and recognitions, and Madam Clerk, I believe you have some to read this evening. It's the exciting part of the agenda. But you'll have to unmute yourself.
Should I share my screen, Julie?
Yes, I keep floating between the video and my packet, so that's why it always takes me a little time to unmute myself, et cetera. Let me, can you like make it heap?
Bigger than this?
Huge, yes, because I cannot enlarge it.
Let me see. Oh, yeah, I should be able to do that down here. Hang on.
Or do I need to change my view?
Me. How's that?
That is much better.
Really big on my screen.
As big as I can see. Okay, so I'm going to start. You're going to have to scroll.
Okay.
All right, first, we are giving these awards to our helpful isn't the word, our champions of democracy, as it says on the thing, which is, I have to say, doesn't mean we're championing the Democratic Party. This is about our form of government. It's a democracy. So first, we have a an award for Andrea Kohler, our town clerk, for Vicky Novoicek, our supervisor of the checklist, and for Paul Scapidi, our town moderator. In appreciation of committed, reliable, courteous, competent, extraordinary dedication and service to the residents of the Town of Exeter during the 2020 primary and general elections, which were held during the COVID-19 pandemic, presented by the Select Board and the Town Manager this ninth day of November 2020, by Nico Papakostanti, Select Board Chair, Molly Cowan, Select Board Vice Chair, Julie Gilman, Select Board Secretary, it's clerk, Lovey Roundtree Olaf as a Select Board Member, and Darrell Brown, Select Board Member, and Russell Dean, Town Manager. Need some scrolling.
That's it?
That's it. Thank you.
There you go.
So I think we have, we have all three recipients with us tonight. I see Vicky, I see Paul.
And Vicky is here, and I don't see Andy.
Okay. And we could stop in and see her tomorrow, and but but.
I didn't want to hold up the plaque. I don't know if you can see it in my virtual background here, but so this plaque, this plaque, which is inscribed with all of the information that Madam Clerk just read, our plan is to put this in the town clerk's lobby in recognition of Vicky and Paul and Andy for the great job they did in the election season this year. And I know, I know, Mr. Chairman, you were a big part of it as well with the pre-meetings and everything that we went through, was an extraordinary, extraordinary effort by these folks to bring this home, and they did an amazing job. So just wanted to express my thanks before. I know you probably want to say something too, but just wanted to say that. So this will go up in the in the clerk's lobby for the foreseeable future. We'll always be able to remember this year's election.
Mr. Chair, I would like to just add on to that, that as a spectator outside, things just went so smoothly from what I could see. The eerie thing about it was that everybody was quiet, and I think part of that was because they had to stand in front of us for so long that they just didn't want to interact and, you know, give away which way they were going to vote or whatever, because usually I just pass on by. But the the numbers were incredible, and to have that line go, you know, halfway around the school was just incredible. And I wanted to ask Ms. Novoicek, what percentage of our registered voters actually were there? Because over 10,000 is huge.
Yeah, so the day of the election, our voter rolls were a little over 14,000. So I haven't done the numbers, and I'm certainly not a mathematician, but I would say 75 to 80% are eligible and registered voters that are in town have voted, which was quite profound and incredible. I, it was a day to remember for sure, and thank you for recognizing us. And I'm, I don't know if this is a time to say what I want to say, but it wasn't just me. I have a team of Michelle Burke and John Crowley, who were incredible champions, and we had Stacy Penna, who stepped up to help us the day of the election to help register voters. And I know those that registered day of, they had a bit of a wait. But the detail that we need to pay attention to in order to register voters, we just wanted to make sure that the day was impeccable, and all of those that waited were amazing, calm, very satisfied and happy to wait. You know, I know it was a little bit over an hour. But, you know, Paul, you've been a champion. You have been a calm in the storm that I have been feeling. Andy Kohler and her team, all the clerks that have faced our voting public and everybody every day. Rustine, thank you for listening to me when I wasn't quite sure which way was up, and all of the Select Board, every day that you guys show up and are doing the job that you're doing. Grateful. Thank you for being at the polls and being a consummate support of who we are. I just, I'm grateful. I don't mean to get emotional, but thank you each and every one of you. I really wanted to make sure that our voting public had an opportunity to have their voice heard, and I didn't care what side that they were saying. I just, it was important, and it's always important. And, you know, I want to say to those that might be listening, and I know not many of you may be, but if you have questions, concerns, please ask, reach out to the, you know, the supervisor of the checklist. I'm here. We have a dedicated email. We have a dedicated phone line. You know, we're the ones that can answer the questions. So I'll stop. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Vicky. And you know, it's important to note that there were four elections this year. Four elections, starting in February, March, and in March, we were talking about a pandemic that was coming our way potentially, and we had the hand sanitizer and all of that. A week later, the pandemic breaks out. And Paul, you and Andy and Vicky and your teams did an incredible job of making sure that the voters were able to vote, that every voter that wanted to vote could vote. And back in September, and just last week, knowing the numbers that we were going to have, and knowing that a lot of our usual volunteers would not be able to volunteer because of the pandemic, you recruited numbers, numbers of volunteers, people who have never volunteered before, and it was incredible to see how excited they were to be part of the process. And then just also Paul and Vicky, the meetings and the phone calls and the webinars every week with the Secretary of State. And Vicky, I just have to, I have to say, I mean, you did everything, everything, everything to make sure that everybody that wanted to vote, and I saw that days leading up, you were in that car, and you were making sure that everybody could get an absentee ballot. Thank you, thank you, thank you so much for what you've done for the voters of this town in 2020.
If I may.
Please.
This, this was definitely a team effort from Vicky's office to Andy's office, to the Police Department, to the Highway Department, to Rusty Lister over at the school. They gave us anything and everything that we wanted and asked for. There wasn't anything that I couldn't get that made this job go as smooth as it did. You guys showing up on the board, showing up on the day of voting to participate all day long with us. The Police Department being there, giving the guys up, coming out to make sure that we were all safe. I can't say enough for everybody and the people. It'd be impossible to name them all. There must have been 50 volunteers, poll workers, ballot clerks, Vicky's office. These people were just great in every imaginable way that you could ask. No one said, no, I'm not going to do that. No, that's not what I'm here for. If I ask, would you please, can you? They all just said, yes, whatever. Let's go. Let's do it. Let's get it done. The other thing that was really impressive, as far as I was concerned, were the voters of Exeter. The people showed up. I mean, the morning, we were all there. The morning was just jam-packed with voters. I didn't hear one complaint about, I have to wait in line. This is ridiculous. I'm not getting through. Nobody complained. They all took direction the way we wanted them to. We knew they would do it. Exeter has just come through. You can't say enough of the voters. The voters took it the way it was supposed. took it the way it was supposed to be taken and did one heck of a job themselves. They get in, they voted, they left. No problems, no, uh, there wasn't anything that worried me during the day that I was, you hear all the talk that went on about the whole thing. It just wasn't that way in Exeter. Exeter just came out and just did what they had to do. And they were very, in my opinion, very impressive. Um, uh, voters to come and, and do what they had to do. Uh, and it was terrific to watch. It was a long day for all of us. Um, I, you know, one of the things about Vicky's, uh, office and Andy Cole's office, people don't see what goes on behind the scenes. All the work and the time and the effort they put in is just amazing. When I, I was in, I never spent that much time in the town clerk's office in all my years of working for the town, as I did over the last three months. And the ladies in there just did a yeoman's job. Um, I never heard anybody complain. They were terrific. I can't say enough about the people of this town. It was just wonderful to watch. And, um, I think it's, it just, um, is, it, it just puts a, a big star on Exeter when you look at what it's, what a town is supposed to be about. This proved that Exeter is one hell of a town.
Well, thank you. Well said. Well said.
We appreciate the honor. That was very nice of you guys to do that. I really do appreciate that.
And for all of those, sorry, Nico, and for all of those that will see this plaque, for the countless hours that you spent in the town clerk's office organizing our absentee ballots, making sure things, you know, the paperwork married, like the countless days that we put in, the pre-processing. It's like, yes, my name's on it, Paul's name's on it, Andy's name on it. I want you to look at that and know your name is there as well. Because you, without you, we would not have had what we had on Tuesday. So huge amounts of great, thank you, gratefulness. Um, and that award is not in Paul, mine, and Andy's name. It's
It's a town award.
Because of the team and the town behind us, for sure.
And, and just as a side note, it was, uh, Vicky, it ended up being 70% of the voters came out.
Thank you. See, I'm not a mathematician.
We had, by the end of the day, we had 14,800 plus registered, and we had 10,422 vote, which by and far, uh, was the largest amount of, the biggest had was 2016, which was about 9,300. So we added 1,000, uh, more people through the door. Um, and again, it just went smoothly and quick. And, uh, after all of this, it's finally over. Um, we can all, we'll sit back and relax just a little bit.
March is around the corner, though. They're coming for you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a, I have a quick anecdote I want to share. I know it wasn't too long ago that Vicky was actually pondering maybe not serving again on the supervisors of the checklist. And she and I had a conversation, and she decided to stay, and I'm so glad she did because if you saw the amount of work that this lady did, and you probably did on social media, everybody did a total park. But there were, like, no other election, there were things flying around on social media this election about ballots and every single issue Vicky was on top of, triaged and brought into her group and got it solved one way or the other. So, uh, and Paul, I've never seen Paul as much as I saw him in the last couple of months. He was, he was a quarterback, a daily presence, like he was saying, leading up to this election, and it was just awesome. And you guys did such a great job. And in a time where election workers are literally under siege in this country right now, you have a lot to be proud of. And thank you. On behalf of me and anyone I can name, appreciate all of your efforts so much.
Selectwoman Gilman, you patiently had your hand up.
Yes, thank you. So I wanted to say, as, as Mr. Scapidi did, to thank you to all the voters that came. It really showed a civic, uh, responsibility and interest that I haven't seen either, Paul, in, in the time that I've been here. Um, I wanted to give a shout out for your triaging of the alphabet, so that it moved, uh, much more quickly. I was surprised at how many people had their names that began with F and G because I kept getting put aside while N through Z kept getting to go forward. But that was a great thing, and I hope that we can do that again, uh, when we have those kind of numbers. Plus, I want to add into that, uh, I was at a Broadway show back in February where the, um, main character, um, um, showed a, a section of the audience and said, this is what, this 20% is what usually shows up at local elections, and that local elections are really important. So that's why March is really important. And it's true, we typically get about 20% in March. So, you know, let's make ourselves proud again and show, uh, more folks coming out for town meeting in March. Thank you.
Yes, indeed.
Thank you all. I really appreciate it.
Thank you both. Any other comments? Great. Thanks. Thanks again.
Thank you. Vic, we'll see you later.
Bye, Paul. See you soon.
Got it. Take care, everybody.
Bye bye. Good night. Okay, next on the agenda, we have the approval of our minutes. Uh, and I'd like to, I didn't get a chance to do this when we came back from non-public session, but introduce our recording secretary, Joanna Bartel, with us. Um, so at this time, if there are no, um, revisions, um, or, uh, corrections to the minutes, I would look for a motion to approve the extra select board meeting minutes of October 26, 2020.
So moved.
Second. Motion second. Discussion, Selectwoman Gilman, your hands up? Not anymore. You're muted.
Page has, page five has the vote on the, uh, extension of the mask ordinance. And while it gives who gave the first and second, it doesn't say what the vote actually was. So it was a four.
Four to one.
Four and a one against and no extensions. But that's all I found.
Okay, that's, that's a.
I'd ask, uh, Selectwoman, Selectwoman Roundtree, Olive, to amend her motion to include as amended.
I will amend my motion to include Selectwoman Gilman's note that it does not recognize who voted in the four to one, uh, vote. So. Will that be updated and we'll just vote again? Or is that, will that survive?
We just, we just vote to approve the minutes as amended, and then Joanna will, will amend it.
And whoever seconded needs to amend their second.
Selectwoman Brown.
Second. I amend my second to this second. Madam Clerk?
Uh, Selectwoman Brown.
Aye.
He indicates aye, yes. Selectwoman Roundtree, Olive.
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan.
Aye.
The clerk says aye. Mr. Chair?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Uh, we do not have any appointments this evening, so we can jump right into our discussion items. Uh, first on the agenda is the holiday parade proposal. We have Beth Dupell with us. Beth, you've, you've been here since we first logged on. Thank you for your patience. We also have Melissa Roy from Parks and Rec with us.
Uh, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, good evening.
Excellent. Um, I'm joining you tonight representing the Exeter Holiday Parade Volunteers. Unfortunately, the pandemic makes organizing and executing a traditional holiday parade almost impossible. As a result, our volunteers have been hard at work devising an alternative celebration for the community, young and old, to enjoy. We've been referring to this celebration as a reverse parade, but that title is a bit misleading. Reverse meaning that cars will be driving and the planned celebration will be stationary. But unlike a traditional parade, there will be no floats or marching bands participating. When outlining this concept, as much as we would have liked to have held this event in the downtown area, you know, near the bandstand or Swayze Parkway, it was clear that the potential traffic would prohibit this. Uh, the Exeter Police and Fire Departments agreed, and alternative locations were identified. We are extremely grateful that the SAU 16 School Board has agreed to let us hold this 2020 parade celebration on the high school campus. The campus offers easy access in a less traveled part of town. It also provides for more than adequate spacing for social distancing purposes. In your packet is a map of the proposed celebration layout. Festive vignettes will grace the high school campus. These vignettes will be created by a few families, small business owners, and the parade volunteers. These vignettes will be assembled during the day for enjoyment during the evening. We are limiting the number of participants constructing these vignettes, given current COVID guidance. As much as we are going to miss the spirit and enthusiasm of our past float participants, this just isn't the year to have groups of adults and children assisting with the preparations. Masks will be required of all parade volunteers and vignette participants, with the possible exception of Santa Claus. I'm here tonight looking for approval from the select board for the 2020 parade celebration to be held on the traditional parade date of Saturday, December 5th, from 5:00 PM until 8:00 PM at Exeter High School. We urge families to fill their travel mugs with hot cocoa, wear their footy pajamas or Christmas sweaters, and join us on a journey through a winter wonderland. And I will entertain any questions.
Great. Thank you, Beth, for that presentation. I just wanted to, uh, tidy up on, on the memo here. Um, so SAU 16 has voted to, um, allow you to use the property?
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay. And it said also that Health Officer James Murray had given tentative approval for the concept. Um, and I know he's on tonight. Um, Mr. Murray, has that changed or is it still tentative?
Uh, no change. I, I would give my approval.
Okay. Any questions of Ms. Dupell from the board?
Uh, yes, I do. Um, um, Beth, are you still, still taking, um, possible vignettes or other groups that want to set up something?
So we don't, um, we don't have a, I mean, we've done no marketing of this. We've done no discussing of this. So the general public really doesn't, have, uh, an idea of what this concept is. So other than our network of people that we have worked with in the past, um, we haven't reached out to the general public yet at this time. Uh, upon receiving approval, hopefully tonight, uh, we certainly will be, be putting out a, uh, call for uh, donations of artificial Christmas trees, uh, possibly extension cords, and even maybe the loaning and use of, uh, generators. Uh, so we haven't done a lot of that outreach at this point in time, Julie.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, and, and James, um, there's nothing else that they need to do, uh, to satisfy you approving this?
No, nothing else. I think it looks really good.
Okay, all right. And Mr. Dean, the police have also signed off on, um, the traffic flow?
Yes, they have.
Okay. And there'll be a police detail, detail?
Yes.
Okay. Melissa, did you have anything to add? No?
No, we met with police, fire, Beth, um, to talk through all the details and everything. So all of the town, um, departments that need to be involved have all met and discussed and reviewed.
Okay. Then I guess at this point, I would, um, entertain a motion from the board to approve the special event application for the holiday celebration proposal to take place, um, at the Exeter High School on December 5th, 2020, from 5 to 8. So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk?
Selectwoman Roundtree, Olive.
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan.
Aye.
Selectwoman Brown.
Aye.
Uh, clerk says aye. Mr. Chair?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Beth, thank you very much for the work that you and your committee have done to put this together.
Thank you, and thank you for, uh, the support, uh, and guidance from the fire and police and Parks and Rec to, uh, move this forward.
Great. Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too. Thank you.
Bye bye.
Okay. Chief Wilking, you are up for classification plan update for the fire department.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, a bit ago, I met with Russ, and I believe in your packet, uh, you have a memo and some attached job description. Uh, part of the things that, uh, I've been looking at, and, uh, Russ and I have discussed for months throughout my in-from period, was ways to be innovative, um, doing a better job, being more efficient, uh, and keeping the taxpayer in mind. And one of the things I'd like to do, uh, is discuss a, a reclassification of a few positions, uh, in the office. Um, when I started and for the past 15 years, uh, Chief Como had, uh, he was the chief emergency managing director. We had two assistant chiefs. And I can't tell you the number of times, uh, I would introduce myself as Assistant Chief Wilking, and they said, I just met the assistant chief. He's Ken Birkenbush, and he, and he's been in town for months, or for years, rather. And, uh, so it, it created a bit of confusion and, and things along the way. And honestly, as I included the memo, it, it really wasn't a clear chain of command and, and, and rank structure. I, I, like you said, Russ and I kind of batted this around, and I'm proposing, uh, an assistant chief of the fire department, uh, true assistant department head, uh, and assistant emergency managing director, and two subordinate positions. Um, one, I'd like to call a deputy chief of training and EMS, two very important components of my, of our mission, and another deputy chief of prevention and inspections, uh, that the health officer and all will be working with. And, uh, a side note to that, um, other than myself working day-to-day with James, there really isn't a deputy health officer in Exeter. Um, and if, uh, if you agree with me that this reclassification makes sense, um, my goal with the, um, prevention inspection person would be to serve as the deputy health officer. So we have more depth in that important role right now, especially as we continue down the pandemic. Without reading the memo verbatim, the nuts and bolts kind of work out that I'm looking to reclassify the current assistant chief to lab grade 15, that's once, one grade higher, that's in line with and equal to the deputy police chief, second in command there. Um, and in trade, thank you, Russ, um, and in trade for that, I'd like to reclassify the deputy chiefs, so the third in command and down, to a lab grade 13, still in line with a pay grade commensurate to the duties. Um, and it also aligns them with the third in command of the police department. They call their position a lieutenant. Um, a lieutenant in the fire department works the floor, and that's a union position. So, so I'm looking to create, uh, positions outside of the union structure, use to be non-union, uh, positions, um, that we control the cost, we control the steps, the colors, uh, and honestly work, uh, in our atmosphere in the office, creating a cohesive, uh, leadership team. So with that, um, a, a memo I forwarded a, a week or so ago, um, included some budgetary numbers, and it didn't make the packet. I apologize for that, uh, just, uh, because I'm kind of that budget guy, and I, like you, Nico, I look forward to the season. Um, the numbers that I, that I'd just like to share, you know, in a, in a nutshell, the current positions that occupy the office of the, the front office of the fire department, uh, were budgeted to FY '20, uh, a little over $382,000. And I'm proposing the same four positions in the front office going into '21 at $366,000. So a significant decrease with all the positions. And then there's a number of reasons for that. Obviously, Chief Como retiring is a big one, but a number of things also, as we limit our exposure to an employee, um, receiving holiday pay, longevity and stipends as associated with a union contract, and we offer them a step in grade, uh, commensurate again to the duties without those, those side, uh, costs associated. So I think it'll work. I'm excited to get started, and, uh, I was, again, speaking with Russ, it takes a solid six weeks, maybe even eight, to do a process and see candidates, both internal and perhaps external, if we don't have enough internal. Um, and have this thing, so at best, we're looking at a first of January rollout with this. If we could kind of go through the process of, uh, seeking candidates now, we can get things rolling from the beginning of the year. We can have a good, strong team moving forward into '21.
Great. Thank you, Chief. And just to put this in perspective, the police department, um, successfully went through a, uh, similar reclassification last year, um, when, when Chief Pooleen came on. Um, and I, I think it's, the structure seems to make more sense, Chief Wilking, and I think it also sets up that proper succession. So if you're not available, um, you know, then, uh, there would be that assistant chief. Are there any questions or comments from the board? I don't see any. You always disappear. So Slick Woman Gilman.
Uh, no, I just appreciate the change in responsibility so that poor James Murray isn't left out there on his own as our sole health officer. And having that, being able to transfer to another deputy will really, I think, smooth that out, especially now in the conditions that we're living in.
No, I agree, and thank you so much. He's never on his own, but I'll tell you, Russ has been working hard on the weekends. I receive a lot of phone calls on the weekends. So there's a lot of people acting in those roles that perhaps they're behind the scenes as we should be. But yeah, I'm excited as well to give James a hand. And back in the day with Jupi Jervis and Kenny Birkenbush kind of working hand in hand in the health department, this kind of harkens back to that where there's a couple of people that can really work together and fill in when one is not available.
And Chief Wilking, I think it also lines up with the recent public safety study that we, that we all reviewed. So I know you took that into consideration when you were putting.
It does move forward on that. I won't say it. There was not a lot in the study that was critical or supportive, I guess, of the administrative portion of the firehouse, obviously staffing and all that. But it does set us up for a very smooth transition through what we call a chain of command, a span of control. It puts capable leaders in a position to demonstrate leadership when we're on an incident with the amount of people that, again, if we discuss down the road, any additional hires, it does position ourselves very well. So I agree. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the board? Mr. Dean, I can't believe I'm going to ask you to do this. And this may be the only time I ask you to do this. Would you share your screen with that last document that you had up?
I was wondering if you were going to ask that. I know how much you love to share a screen feature.
I do. Right now, I'm going to appreciate it a whole lot. So.
There it is.
Okay, so we're looking to delete the position under grade 14 of assistant fire chief, EMS coordinator and assistant fire chief, deputy EMD, and create under grade 13 a deputy fire chief, training EMS, deputy fire chief, fire prevention inspections, and under grade 15, assistant fire, that's good, assistant fire chief, assistant EMD, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So I would entertain a motion from the board to delete the positions under grade 14 as struck through on this document, the assistant fire chief, EMS coordinator and assistant fire chief, deputy EMD, and add the three positions that are in bold under grade 13, the deputy fire chief, training EMS, the deputy fire chief, fire prevention inspections, and under grade 15, the assistant fire chief, assistant EMD.
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Just one side question. So these positions are outside of their management, so they're not part of the union? Is that true or no?
Chief Wilking, that's correct, right?
That is correct. All of these positions are considered non-union personnel.
Okay.
Are exempt.
That's it.
Any other questions or comments? And Mr. Dean, I can take my screen back now. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
This is where you mess me up with the order of who's who. Slickman Brown.
Aye.
Slick Woman Roundtree Olaf.
Aye.
Slick Woman Callan.
Aye.
Clerk says aye. Mr. Chair?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you so much.
I know you're standing by for further down in the agenda, so.
Hang around for COVID.
Okay. Next, we're going to discuss an update on impact fees. We have Mr. Dave Sharples, our town planner, and also Mr. Bruce Mayberry, who's going to speak to this. So Mr. Sharples, if you're there.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am. Jump right into it. As you know, the town has a impact fee ordinance that's administered by the planning board, and the planning board assesses impact fees on school and recreation when projects that are subject to it get approved at the planning board. The fees are, several years ago, I noted that the fees hadn't been updated since 2003. So I put it in the budget a couple of years ago, got approved for this, you know, last year. And then we hired Bruce Mayberry, who's with us here today, who actually did the 2003 fees and also a 2009 update, but those never got adopted. So we are still working off our 2003 fees. So we had Mr. Mayberry look at our ordinance and our fees, which he's done. And there's two separate tracks here. We are going to amend our impact fee ordinance just to clean up mostly housekeeping matters, you know, updated references and so forth, and certain language that may not be applicable anymore. But that is a separate issue that the planning board will go through and they'll go through like a zoning amendment in public hearing of the planning board and onto the voters in March of 2021. What we're here for you tonight is regarding the fees, the impact fees that are charged and the amount. Our ordinance says that the planning board shall adopt the fees and the select board accepts them. So wasn't really exactly clear on what that, who goes first and, you know, board, you know, acceptance and. So I looked back what the process was in 2003 and the process was, went to the select board, introduced the fees, they discussed them, then it went to the planning board, you know, had some dialogue, and then we took that to the planning board. Planning board adopted it and then it went back to the select board to kind of implement the fees. So that was the same strategy that I'm going to go today. So tonight, I'm going to have Bruce, Mr. Bruce Mayberry introduce what he did, talk about it and get feedback from the board, hopefully, because he's offering a couple of options that the board can take. And then if the board could, you know, suggest an option, not asking for any vote or anything, then I could take that to the planning board for further discussion. If they adopt it, then I come back to formalize it with the select board. So with that, I handed off to Bruce Mayberry to describe what he did to update the school and recreational impact fees.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Sharples. Good evening, Mr. Mayberry.
Good evening. How are you?
I'm well, thanks. Thank you for joining us tonight.
Okay. Everybody can hear me. I've got a very brief PowerPoint I could share with you just to take you through an outline. It's pretty short. So I don't think, let me give it that a try and see if I can get that up here for you.
Great. There it is.
Okay. So this is an update, as Dave mentioned, school and rec facilities. Again, the original dates from 2003, actually, there was a 2009 update to the schools that was not adopted for reasons I'm not sure of. It could have been, we were in the throes of the great recession and perhaps that was not a good time to to increase the fee. I'm not sure of the reasons for that, but nevertheless, just to go backtrack on what an impact fee is, it's a one-time capital assessment, a new development to cover its proportionate demand on capital facilities. So we try to arrive at a capital value that's proportionate to demands of, as I say, average housing units in this case, because they're all residential fees. So the impact fees under the state statute can work in two different ways. You can be setting aside money for some future improvement that you may need to make to accommodate new development and provide adequate facilities. Or you can also recoup the cost of providing existing facilities that are already in place that have that capacity to absorb new development. And that's the second one, is how most impact fees end up working because eventually you do need to build a facility and often it's built for capacity for the future. And so you end up recovering money over time that you can use to pay off debt service or other capital costs. The 2020 report, again, is spanning a distance of 17 years in terms of cost standards and so forth. But we look at a number of variables. It's not just cost in the school impact fee. The proportionate demand is defined by the number of pupils, average number of pupils per housing unit, excluding age-restricted units that are not subject to the fee. And we do this by documenting in this update, matching up actual counts of students by property type, by address. And so we know fairly precisely what the average enrollment ratios are in Exeter. The capital costs are defined in terms of the square footage of school space that's required to accommodate a pupil based on the district standards. The estimated cost per square foot of school space, and then an allowance for state building aid when it was active. At the time it was active, you know, was providing a significant amount of money for the schools. And so some of that's accounted for because some of the schools we're talking about, obviously, they're already in existence. And a couple of additions, one that's coming up, the one in 2018, got no state building aid. That's adjusted finally with some credit allowances for debt service. It's not a statutory requirement, but it's a general practice to help account for the fact that new development is going to pay something toward debt service that are retiring, say, debt on existing capacity. And there's also a look back period of about 20 years to see what might have been spent in the pre-development stage by vacant land on school improvements. So the assessment options that are in the report are not that far apart. There's A, B, and C. The only difference between the three of them is how do we define a generic capital cost for creating a school? Under A, the lowest, the current New Hampshire Department of Education puts out an annual cost limitation for awarding state building aid on new schools. And there's a certain dollar amount per square foot that's allowed. It doesn't cover all costs, but it's become more limited over time. Second is the insured value of the school facilities serving Exeter. The total insured value is about $132 million in school facilities. That works out to about $30,000 per pupil capacity. And that's the middle value. The last value is updating some of the original construction costs of the Exeter schools to 2020 using an RS means cost multiplier. And that produces the highest of the three options. So the fee alternatives in the report look something like this. A and B are roughly the same. They're really not that much different. C is a little higher. Again, the more conservative fee is the easier to defend, I think, in all cases where you have a lower fee that, rather than the highest fee that might be charged. Turning to the, just a comparison to put it in perspective. So the school fees are up quite a bit, but it's been 17 years. The average increase in the fee, if you look, and we're using basically the same methodology, it must be about 2.5% to 3% per year. And if you looked at the fee as a percent of the median, no home price in Rockingham County, it was about 1.2% of the median in 2003 and about the same relation to the median new home price in 2020, based on the most recent figures I could get. So again, that's not how we calculate it, but that's just how it comes out. So in terms of its relationship to home prices, single home, family home prices, anyway, roughly the same. The recreation impact fee is a little bit different. To start off with, just a reminder that in New Hampshire, recreation impact fees cannot include the cost of public open space. So the rule of thumb is to look at developed facilities. The underlying land, of course, is supports to developed facilities, but not things that are purely conservation, let's say, or open space. The 2003 fee basis used a model that I've used before, which is based on number of facilities needed per thousand persons. But I found over the years, that approach really doesn't reflect how recreation planning is done today. Almost no communities meet the standards, the so-called standards. So they tend to reflect higher than typical expenditures. What I've moved to in Dover and some other places has been a capital cost standard. In other words, trying to define a reasonable capital amount, capital investment per capita based on historical expenditures and based on the capital improvements program and so forth. And I think the rule of thumb is to not get too overeager, I guess, in terms of padding it up with a lot of expensive projects because they might not come to fruition. It would be preferable to have a fee that's more defensible based on history. And the recreation fee, again, there are three options. I don't know why we tend to think in threes, high, medium, low, I guess. But again, the first one, we documented as much as we could, the total capital value of recreation facilities in Exeter. And we divided by the current population to see what has it been to date? What is the cumulative investment in recreation facilities that we can document? So that's the simplest and lowest cost. The second one, we add some of the capital improvement projects that are in the current CIP and divide by 2040 population to try to keep it conservative amount. We don't want to say that's a six-year horizon because that's going to be too low. And in C, we add another $4.5 million to the total investment for planned recreation park improvements, not the whole community center, but some of the baseline investments that need to be made to make that site usable for any future additional fields, parking or facilities, and divide by an even larger population because the benefits, I think, expand to ever larger populations. Back when we did the 2003 fee, we tried to use a build-out population. That's essentially what the 2050 would be at over 18,000 people. So the impact fee that we come out with per capita, it's multiplied by estimated persons per housing unit for different types of units. And then that defines, again, the fee schedule, which is per dwelling unit by type of structure. Again, A and B, A is highly defensible because it's based on history, what's actually been spent. B is a little bit higher because there's a little more capital value being put in there. And the third is again, adding a little bit more to recreation park. And that's about it. That's the nutshell description that boils down the larger reports, I think, into. And I'll stop, unless you want to go back to a slide, I'll stop the sharing on that.
Okay. Any members of the board wish to see any slides again before we move on? And I can't see any of you. So if you do, just speak up. All right. I think we're all set with the slides. Thank you. Thank you for putting that together. That actually, you know, summarized the report that we read in our packet well.
Okay, very good.
Are there any questions for Mr. Mayberry from the board?
Uh, yes, I had one. So is there any model for the kind of gap we might experience? So whatever's happening right now, so whether it's a freeze in population or a future change in what capital improvement projects look like based on, you know, a changing needs for building, did any of that, I mean, I don't even know if it's possible, if it's too soon, but did any, do you have any like footnotes about what this current time might show us for the next five years?
Yeah, yeah, that's hard to know with what we're going through right now. I think that, I mean, odd things are happening. I mean, home values are going up during a pandemic, things like that. And I've seen places actually increasing in school enrollment when all the demographics say that it should be going down. That's not the case in Exeter, but so odd things are happening. The way to adjust for those, I think, is periodically, as you've done here, is to commission an update. But I always say, if things change radically in terms of, in other words, if a new facility were actually to be approved by the voters, something of a magnitude, then a new school, an expansion, I've accounted for those, I think, in the school fee. If the town were to eventually approve the community center that was originally planned, that would be a big shift. And so if those things actually get approved, I think that's the time to do an update and incorporate that. So there's no rule that says you have to live with this for three, five, or 17 years. It can be updated pretty much anytime. I think your ordinance has some guidelines about that. I also, I had a phone message from, a text message from Dave Sharples that said he got cut out for some reason, but he's able to listen and I think he can, I think he can participate by voice.
He's, I see his phone on the attendee list.
Yeah, okay. So he wanted me to pass that through, so.
Thank you.
But I'm not sure if they answer your question, but you can update it pretty much anytime, as long as it's some, you know, basis of assessment that goes with it. There are some places like Portland, Maine, that adjust their impact fees every year based on an engineering news record standard. So there's different means of doing it. I think the schools are a little more complicated because enrollment per unit changes often. And I think that the, because enrollment per unit has gone down, there's still a lot of remaining capacity in the school system. So I don't see that one changing a lot, but recreation. recreation, if you were to spend a lot more on recreation than normal, that might be a time to incorporate a you know, a change in the capital value assumptions.
Thank you.
Selectwoman Gilman.
Yeah, I was wondering when looking at the different housing types, where do the continuum of care facilities like Riverwoods or, you know, something like that come in because they're not, they don't have children?
Right, right.
And it's a lot of housing units.
Right. What we did in the in the methodology, we we excluded all those types of housing units, all the 55 and older and 62 and older and assisted living and continuum of care and nursing homes and so forth. None of those are used as part of defining the ratio of of schoolchildren per housing unit because they wouldn't be assessed. So we took those out of the equation when we first defined expected number of pupils per dwelling unit.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Mayberry? I'm just looking. I've lost one member here. I don't see.
While you're looking, Mr. Chairman, Dave, do the, I'll ask Dave a question. Does the board need to accept this report? Do you recommend that?
No, not not at this time. I'm just gonna follow what the past practice was and the way the ordinance is. We're gonna clean up the ordinance with the amendment, but I'm coming. I just want to recommend a consensus right now, which way the board would like to go with A, B, or C at this point and not do any votes, and then I'll take it to the planning board. Then we'll adopt it and come back to the select board to institute the fee at that point.
Okay, thanks. And you need them to decide that A, B, or C tonight, or is that something they can ponder a little bit and then get back to you on?
I, you know, I mean, there's no deadline on this, so if the board wants to ponder it, then let's ponder it and and I'll come back.
So that being said, wishes of the board, we can either make a recommendation tonight for Dave to bring to the planning board, or we can kind of study this a little bit further after taking in Mr. Mayberry's presentation. So I'd leave wishes to the board, whether we make that recommendation now or at our next meeting.
I would prefer at the next meeting so I have time to actually look over all the details.
As would I.
And I'd like to wait as well. Mr. Mayberry, are you available? Can we contact you during that time?
Yes, yes, anytime. Dave and I will be in touch. We have to speak to the planning board as well. So sure, I'm available for any follow-up you need.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Selectwoman Talwin, are you in agreement?
Yep.
Okay. Then Mr. Dean will revisit this on our November 23rd meeting, and Dave, we can make a recommendation at that time.
Perfect. Sounds great. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Mayberry.
Thank you very much. Be well.
You too. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have the FY19 audit report. Mr. Dean, I think, is going to give an introduction. We also have a member of the auditing team, Mr. Ed Boyd, with us this evening. Is has Doreen, is the budget recommendations committee still in full swing, Mr. Dean?
I see Doreen's with us. Her name is on the screen, so.
Okay.
E R C must have wrapped.
Perfect. So then I will turn it over to either you or Doreen, whoever's most appropriate.
Okay, and I'll pass the torch. We just got our FY19 audit about maybe a month ago. We got it finalized. We've had a chance to talk with Mr. Ed Boyd. He's our auditor from Melanson Heath, and he's gone through our financials with us already. I can see Ed on my screen, so he's ready to go through his presentation. And I think what I'd like to do is maybe just turn it over to him. If you do want me to share the screen, I can certainly do that. Just let me know how you'd like to proceed on that front, Mr. Chairman, or you'd just like Ed to kind of go through his stuff and and that sort of thing. And maybe Ed can answer the question. Ed, if you prefer the the screen shared, let me know. And I don't want to leave Doreen out, too. Doreen, do you want to say hello and have anything to add before we jump into it?
Good evening. No, I just got through the budget meeting, so I'll just sit back and take a listen. So thank you, Ed, for coming this evening.
Mr. Dean, I'll defer to Mr. Boyd if he'd like you to share the screen because that helps his presentation. That's fine, or?
Very good.
Members of the board would like you to share the screen.
Thank you first off for the introduction, Russ and Doreen. My name is Ed Boyd. I am a principal with Melanson and the the audit leader for the town of Exeter. Mr. Chairman and other members of the select board, thank you for having me this this evening to go over the results of the 2019 audit. Russ, just maybe before I get into things, what what I think would be helpful, just because I'm going to be going through a lot of numbers. So when I say a lot, I I really do want to be be brief here. I certainly appreciate the length of the agenda and the COVID-19 updates that that are coming. So what I really want to try to do is take this 65-page document and try to shrink it down to to probably a couple of pages, and that's really geared around not not just what I think is important, but what I think the key stakeholders. What I mean by that, the bond rating agencies, your bondholders, your taxpayer advocacy groups, you folks, along with the citizenry, these are just some of the numbers and really focal points of the financial statements that that really helps someone understand or really paint a picture as to how a community is doing. So Russ, if you don't mind, just I'll give you the page numbers and we can just, you know, we don't have to do anything too crazy here, but I think it it wouldn't hurt to to just reference a couple of pages here. And it would be, we're gonna go through the financial statements first. Now, while Russ is getting to the to the financial statements, one thing that he had mentioned is that the audit was was finalized roughly a month ago. And for starters, I want to mention that that is not anything that's indicative of how the audit went. Because I'm happy to tell you folks that I think the audit went very well. I think what you'll see is this is going to be a very positive theme, and we'll go through some of the key numbers in the financial statements. But I certainly want to point that out. We issued a draft back in back in July and took some time to really review those numbers. So the fact that I'm here on on November night is not indicative of any lag time whatsoever. You know, the other thing that I want to bring up, too, is the Doreen and the finance team had the distinct pleasure of being our first COVID-19 remote audit. So I really, you know, on on behalf of Melanson, and I'm sure I'm sure a lot of folks on on this call and listening at home, I just want to say thank you to, you know, your commitment as we, you know, we kind of weathered the storm, if you will. There was a lot going on other than the audit, but I, you know, I really want to communicate to you folks that there was still a commitment to to going through this process, to to getting us what we need. So I really want to point that out, that it's hard enough to conduct an audit. I can only imagine what it's like to be on the receiving end under normal circumstances. So I really just want to point that out. So as I said, I think it's going to be a really positive theme, and the first thing that I can communicate to you folks is that the audit went well. Now, as far as required communications go, we found the books and records to be in good working order. Key accounts were reconciled on a timely basis. There were no disagreements with management in the application of generally accepted accounting principles. We did issue a management letter, but there's going to be just a couple housekeeping items. There were no material weaknesses or no significant deficiencies in internal control. And we did issue what's called a unmodified or a clean opinion, which is essentially, that's the best you can get, meaning that your financial statements are presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. And that's going to be the first place that we go to, Russ, is it was report page five. Pardon me, PDF page five, report page two.
Report page two. Right here?
No, this is the management letter. I think we had already gone through the the financial statements.
Gotcha. So we're into the financials here. Page two on that.
One more.
Whoops. I feel like I'm in the movie Toy Story, you know, on the controller going around the horn a couple times and then having to go back.
I'm not sure I'd be doing much better here.
Here we go.
Thank you. Now, the financial statements are the town's financial statements, really. The only, we assist the town in making sure that you know, there are certain disclosures made and accruals that are that are made for presentation, but when it comes down to it, the only items within the financial statements that are quote-unquote hours, the auditors, is the independent auditors report, which is pages one through three. And here is, under the caption Opinions, is where we talk about how we've issued an unmodified or clean opinion stating that your financial statements are totally in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. So again, not not a not a massive item here, but just I don't think I've been in front of the board for for a couple of years now, so really just trying to give you folks some some points of reference. So we can, we can move on, Russ, and we're gonna go to, it's going to be page, I think your pages are different. It's going to be page 12. And as you're scrolling through here, I'll just mention for you folks, this is a great reference to go back to. This is what's called M D N A, and that's Management's Discussion Analysis, and this gives you some some real good insight into key account balance, right here, Russ. Key account balances and changes year over year. Then again, it's a wealth of information that you folks can go back and reference to, and it's just a deeper dive on some of the things that that we're going to talk about this evening. So we've stopped on the statement in that position. So this is going to be one of two financial statement pages that that we talk about. And within your financial statements, essentially, you have largely two different accounting measurement focus. And I know that's a that's getting a little technical here. But when it comes to governmental financial statements, there's two bases of accounting for a reason. You have your statement in that position, which is right here, and as as you scroll through this, you'll see that you'll you have capital assets, you have bonds payable. You're going to have your OPEB liabilities, you're going to have your pension liabilities, which 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 we'll get into. But this is a long-term perspective basis. And this is really to act more in the traditional sense of, you know, of a corporation and a commercial entity in how they operate, which is very different from probably the the financials that that you folks are accustomed to seeing, which is more of a of a fund basis, looking at your general fund, looking at your water and sewer funds, your trust funds, the Epping Road TIF, which is really, for the most part, on a, in many cases, a modified cash basis. And there's a reason for that. It's to try to have the decision makers see, again, two different perspectives from a short term, more of a conservative, available resources standpoint, to then looking at things from a long-term perspective as we get into capital assets, and then really more so, I would say, managing long-term liabilities. And we'll we'll get into more of that as we we go to the the next page. So Russ, I'm going to have you just continue scrolling here until we get to one more page, please. Right here. This is your governmental funds balance sheet. Now, after the opinion page, this is probably the the next page that any informed user is going to go to. And they're going to focus on that column, that that really furthest to the left, that first one, that that general fund. That is really where the bulk of a community's activity resides, and that is almost always going to be the focal point. Now, that's not to say that the other elements aren't important, but this is really an indicator of how a community is doing. And where they're going to go is they're going to focus on, it's going to be that third number up from the bottom, unassigned fund balance. That's about $3.3 million. Now, over the last four years, the town's unassigned fund balance, or it's it's really essentially with unencumbered and no restrictions available for appropriation. That really paints the picture of, you know, liquidity and fiscal health. And over the last four years, that number has gone from $2.2 million in 2016, 2.8 in 2017, to 3.6 in 2018, and then back down to 20 to 3.3 in 2019. So you've seen real strong growth and real positive trends in in your unassigned fund balance over the last couple of years. And that number, certainly from looking at it from a comparability, from, you know, a percentage of your revenue or your budget, it looks, it's looked at as very stable. And I did mention that the unassigned fund balance did go down from the prior year. I think the key word there is explainable, and I'll probably use that. I don't mean to sound like a broken record, but I'll probably say perspective and explainable throughout this presentation here. But as I, as I mentioned, we've seen real strong growth in this in this number, and that just hasn't happened. That just, you know, the town hasn't just really waved a magic wand, if you will, to see this number come up to the $3.3 million that it that it is. But we did see a slight dip in 2019, but again, that was explainable. When you look at how the budget was put together, there was about $890,000 of fund balance that was used as a combination of $190,000 to fund the capital project fund deficit, but then $708,000 to essentially offset the tax rate. So going into the year, the town planned on essentially having that equity decrease anyway, giving that back to the taxpayers. But on the flip side, the way that you can look at it, even though the unassigned fund balance went down, you actually gained a little bit because it didn't go down as much as you had planned for, because you did have strong selections as far as revenues go. You did have some favorable turnbacks. But you also dealt with still funding capital outlay of half a million dollars. The the winter going into 2019 was pretty brutal from what I remember, and there was some some more plowing costs than than I think was expected. So you have some some of these difficult items that you were able to deal with, and still, and you know, from from what I can see, is generate, you know, an additional fund balance that you didn't plan on having, because again, you planned on essentially putting that $710,000 back to the taxpayers, if you will, but you were able to regenerate a little bit of that back. So again, in my, in my opinion, I believe that positive trend did continue, even though we saw a little bit of a decrease. Now, as a percentage of your appropriations, which do include the county and the schools, that that unassigned fund balance represents about 5%, which is consistent with the fund balance policy that that the town has. But I think just as importantly, the unassigned fund balance represents about 17% of your of your budget, which is pretty close to essentially having two months' worth of expenditures in your unassigned fund balance. That that's something that's typically recommended by the GFOA. And typically, from a from a range perspective, really likes to fall within a probably a 10 to 17% category. So when you look at it from that perspective, things things look pretty good. And again, this is something that didn't just magically happen. I think there was a lot of planning that that went into place here. And again, I would say very stable and looked at as favorable. As far as more positive items go, the town did fund another $175,000 in capital reserves. And again, I had mentioned the capital outlay to the tune of about $500,000, and that's pretty important. It doesn't seem like much me mentioning that because that is something that is a part of the budget annually. But as we move into some of these long-term liabilities, when we talk about, you know, debt, pension, and OPEB, because the town has been able to fund capital with existing resources, it's been able to keep its debt burden very manageable. I believe as of 2019, for your governmental activities, which is your general fund, you're paying off 96% of your debt in 10 years. On the enterprise fund side, your water and sewer funds, you're paying off about 79% in 10 years. Now, that's not inclusive of the new wastewater treatment plant. But why I bring that up is when the rating agencies look at how rapidly or to the to the opposite, you're paying out your debt, the sweet spot is typically 70 to 75% over 10 years. So you're above that. Now, moving forward, when you bring on the wastewater treatment plant, that's not to say that the the new metric is, you know, it's certainly going to be a little bit lower than that, but it's within reason. You know, you have one big project that's really going to skew those numbers, but all else being equal, those those numbers are still in a higher category than typically what is recommended. In addition, the last thing I'm going to get to on the on the on the fund basis here is is to talk about the Epping Road TIF fund, and I believe this is year two now, and the fund does continue to see positive results. Last year, I believe the fund went up $550,000. And this year, the fund balance increased about $250,000. $250,000. And that's inclusive of taking on the first year of debt payments. So you're seeing that fund continue to trend in the right, you know, certainly in the right avenue, continue to generate more as of right now than what's being paid out. So again, looking at everything on a fund basis and really a short term basis, you're looking at really, really favorable trends here. Now, this is where the conversation kind of shifts a little bit, and we start getting into OPEB and pension, and that's where things become a little less positive. But again, I really want to put things in perspective for you folks and folks that might be listening at home. And Russ, I'm going to have you go back to that previous page that we just looked at. And that way everyone can see where the numbers I'm talking about reside. And if you scroll down about three quarters of the way, you're going to see the net pension liability and the net OPEB liability. And the town's applicable portion is $17.7 million for a net pension liability and 3.1 for a net OPEB liability. So let's start with the net pension liability. Now, the town is a member of the New Hampshire Retirement System. And as of right now, pardon me, as of December 31, 2019, the retirement system is about 65% funded, meaning the assets that have been accumulated for pension benefits essentially do not outweigh what the projected benefits to retirees is going to be, essentially resulting in a collective shortfall. Each community is required to essentially recognize their respective portion of the liability, which in Exeter's case was $17.7 million. Now, we're certainly dealing with some big numbers here. And, you know, pension and OPEB have gotten a lot of scrutiny over the last handful of years, because what happens now on this particular accrual basis financial statement, it's presented to recognize. Whereas years ago, this number was really just in the back of the document, and you had to really go hunt and peck for it. But now that these are being recognized again on your long term balance sheet, and the size of the numbers, it's getting a little bit more attention. But again, perspective, I think, is needed. There is a plan to address the net pension liability with the New Hampshire Retirement System. There is currently a funding schedule that goes out to 2039. Over the last two years, that has held still, which is important, because over the last, you know, going back probably seven, eight, 10 years now, that kept getting pushed out a little bit. So it has ceased a little bit here. But a lot of things have to go right for that to essentially remain in effect, because as we all know, there's a number of estimates and assumptions that go into developing, you know, what the cost of the plan is. And also, as importantly, being an underfunded pension system, there's essentially a built in amortization of trying to make up for, you know, for that unfunded portion. So it is a cost that, you know, a lot of communities have looked at as just continuing to increase, and it can be a challenge on the budget. But again, what, you know, what I want to communicate is that this is not a specific Exeter item. You know, every community in the state of New Hampshire is dealing with elements of this. I think there's only two other communities that have their own pension plan. So really, everyone is in the same boat, and essentially recognizing their respective portions accordingly of this liability. But again, there is a plan in place. And in time, if, again, everything remained equal, that number would be zero come 2039. Certainly a long ways away, but I do think it's important to mention that there is some sort of plan in place, but like anything, is going to be continuously revised and scrutinized accordingly. As we move down to OPEB, when I say OPEB, I'm referring to other post employment benefits, which is primarily retiree healthcare. Now, that number is significantly lower. It's $3.2 million. Now, the good thing is that retirees are required to pay 100% of the premiums. Now, when we have these conversations, some folks will say, well, Ed, if they're paying 100%, how do we have a liability? That really doesn't make a lot of sense to me. And really where the liability stems from is because you have a pool of retirees, that in a sense, when you look at your plan demographics, is largely increasing your premiums. So again, from an accounting standpoint, the town is in some level, some way, shape or form, subsidizing those folks. So if you really look at the plan demographics with versus without, you'll see that the costs are likely to be different. That, and again, I'm happy to answer any questions here. I know I'm going through a lot, and trying to be very brief here. That in a nutshell is what's leading to that liability. Now, there's, it's not as similar to the New Hampshire Retirement System, because there isn't necessarily a plan in place to address that liability. But again, I think the town, and again, with other communities in the state of New Hampshire, having retirees pay 100% of those premiums are in, certainly, you know, when you compare state to state, are in a little bit of a different boat here. So I understand we're dealing with some big numbers, but the hope here is that, that I want to get across is liability should be managed accordingly. You're not going to solve these problems overnight. And it's, you know, hopefully, what's happened in the accounting world over the last handful of years has certainly stimulated some conversation to look at these, that these benefits that we're providing now, you know, that largely are being funded in the future. I'm going to pause there, just because that's typically the point where there's a handful of questions. And I'll turn that back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Boyd. I can't see the hands because of the screen. So if any of the select board members have any questions for Mr. Boyd, please ask.
I had a question, Mr. Boyd. Just a point of information. The debt payoff, 75% over 10 years, what's that pinned to? It's general, like wisdom, but what's, is there something else that underlies?
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question again? I'm sorry.
You mentioned like, it's healthy for a town to have a 70 to 75% payoff of their debt for about 10 years. That sounds great, but it is one of those things, like, maybe you know more about, why is that? Why is that the rule of thumb?
Good question. And I guess I'll answer that is maybe looking at some instances where we've seen some communities essentially go the other direction. And I think largely what it stems from is look at what you're borrowing for. And in many cases, when it's to the contrary, and communities are struggling, that they may put themselves in a position to borrow for projects in the amortization or the payment is not in line with the useful life of an asset. So essentially, I guess maybe the equivalent is like when you buy your car, and you essentially, you're going to finance, this is for discussion's sake, a lemon, if you will, and that's only going to be in use for, call it, three years, but you're going to pay it over seven. That is where the metrics are kind of going the other way, because common sense is going to tell you, well, you need a new car. So now, not only are you going to have your old debt, but now you're going to be essentially taking out some additional debt on top of that to finance. So I think it just gets back to trying to really make sure that the useful life of an asset is going to extend beyond the payout on that.
Perfect. Thanks.
Thank you, Selectmen Brown. Any other questions for Mr. Boyd? Mr. Boyd, in your experience, how does the town and our financial situation compare to other towns in New Hampshire with whom you've worked that are similar size?
That's certainly a difficult question, but not one that I didn't expect. And it comes up pretty frequently. It is a little bit challenging to answer, because, you know, the conversation really does need to, you know, almost similar to the financial statements, I think you need to look at the short term, the long term, capital needs, you know, what your debt payout is. But I, you know, I think going back to the general fund, as we had talked about, and looking at some of those percentages, that's, I think that's pretty critical, because you can get lost in so many different communities having, you know, someone might have 35 million in unassigned fund balance, some might have five, but as a portion of the overall size of the community, you know, they're not really comparable. But I would say they're strong. I really do. I think it's a very stable general fund. And seeing, me, the one thing that I'm going to look at is your general fund. And that's the first place I'm going to go, just as I said, and I'm going to trend out your unassigned fund balance, and I'm going to get a sense as to, you know, really how that's going. You know, how is your fiscal management? Are you turning back appropriations? Does there seem to be some stringent control there? And I think that's what's leading me to believe, that I would say it's certainly, I would say, very stable. But I'm comfortable saying it's strong.
Okay. Thank you. I have one last question, but I'm going to wait till the end of your presentation for that. So there are no other questions from the board? Mr. Boyd, continue?
Russ, do you want to go back and we'll just, we'll go through a couple of recommendations that were in the management letter? And again, I do consider these to be housekeeping items. You know, over the last handful of years in working with Russ and Doreen, finance team, everyone's been very open and accepting of any recommendations that we've had. The first thing I want to mention is that we did not issue any new comments during FY19, and one was resolved. And so we'll get into the first one here, which is enhancing formal departmental receipt procedures. This is really, you know, stemming from trying to, you know, continue, you know, taking the town to the next level in some respects. So there are policies in place for a number of items. And there is one for departmental receipts. But it's something that is probably a little bit outdated at this point. And given that the town has transitioned to the Munis platform, as you look ahead, and some of the things that the rating agencies really are focusing on are policies and procedures, and really making sure that that structure is in place. And from an audit standpoint, I know we can vary communities and recommendations with policies and procedures. And they're only as good as the folks adhering to them. But where the rating agencies are coming from is they really want to see more formal policies and procedures, because it's something that helps with continuity, and it's something that's tangible. It's something that you folks can evaluate and see, can we do this better? And that's really it. It's not to say that anything's wrong, but that is essentially the structure that should be in place to essentially keep the internal controls that you have in place now functioning, you know, hopefully without issue into perpetuity. So really, where this is coming from is just trying to take the existing document and seeing if that can, you know, really be a starting point to continue adding and revise as we've come into a more electronic world now. So the methods of, you know, what the risks were maybe a handful of years ago, maybe aren't what they are now, you know, cash versus checkable now versus credit card and ACH and things like that. So you have some of the risks kind of shifting. So it was just to really go back and particularly with the transition now, you know, to evaluate that document and seeing if it could be enhanced and updated to be consistent with what Munis is offering. As we scroll down into number two, this has been a repeat comment over the last couple of years, there were just some old capital project fund balances that have continued to be addressed over the last couple of years. I think there's one, there's one balance left. And I believe Russ had mentioned that it's currently being reviewed to see how that can be dealt with. So again, this is something that the town has been very proactive. And as I had mentioned earlier, about $190,000, I believe, was used in FY19 to fund that deficit. So again, something that has been, you know, acted on, been addressed very proactively. Moving on here, comment number three, this is the comment that has been resolved. It's funny that the impact fee discussion was before this conversation. But essentially, what was, we weren't necessarily saying that there was an issue with the inflows and the outflows. But one of the missing pieces was that when the community was essentially using the impact fees for debt service, that appropriation or that authorization that is necessary was not being done. And so again, I look at it more as a housekeeping item that will be addressed in 2020 and moving forward. And again, yeah, it was really just making sure that those debt payments were properly authorized by you folks.
Just a quick comment, if I could, on that too. I know Julie will remember years ago, we used to talk about our water sewer fees and these kinds of fees, whether they're assessment fees or impact fees, and what were they, and that sort of thing. But we've worked very closely with Ed and the team to really segregate out the true impact fees, put them in the separate cash account, and we'll be bringing those to you annually, just like the school impact fees for release. So you can expect to see that at the end of this year.
Great. Thank you, Russ. And we can just close with looking at comments number four and number five. They relate to the library. And I know the library does have the Board of Trustees that do oversee the operations. But from a financial reporting perspective, it's really looked at as under the umbrella of the town. So it does, it does fall under, you know, part of our review. And one of the issues, and again, we're dealing in a COVID world here, and not to mention the library renovation project, but when we picked a couple of transactions, and particularly as it relates to an Amazon account, some of the documentation didn't appear to be the original documentation that was received. So we had to, you know, essentially go back into the account and get some type of replication of that. But, you know, from an audit perspective, and looking at the statute, the original documents are supposed to be retained until the successful completion of the audit plus one year. And so we're really just making sure that that's what's happening. Or what is happening moving forward is that if we pick a random transaction that, you know, the invoices that is provided is available for inspection. But again, I think, and we were dealing in a very remote world where things were packed up, and tough to come by, but in talking with folks at the library, they understood, you know, where we were coming from, and I don't think had any reservation with what we were, you know, what we were asking for. And everything was properly provided to the Board of Trustees and approved. We just wanted to take that next step, you know, primarily as relates to the inspection for the audit, and employees within town, that they had the ability to, you know, essentially ensure that there was that documentation to understand what the, you know, what the nature of the invoice was. And similarly, with petty cash, we were trying to get certain receipts that were matched up to reimbursement of related costs. And we were able to get documentation, but it was, again, I think more of a, not the original file that we would typically be accustomed to looking at. But again, looking at comments number four and five, I think I wouldn't expect those to, you know, to be here next year. So really, in closing, I do just want to thank the board again. Russ, thank you for inviting me. And Doreen, thank you for putting up with me during the audit. I know it's probably a lot. And really, just to close, I think that the town is, you know, really taking some really good strides financially over the last, you know, handful of years. And that's, again, not something that just came to fruition. So again, the audit went well, and I'm happy to answer any of the questions that you folks may have.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Boyd. You know, one question I had was back to recommendation number one, which I think is really the one that sticks out to me most. which I think is really the one that sticks out to me most. And I think maybe you could just clarify it and that'll be fine. But you made the recommendation in the prior year. And then your current year status was that the town has not established the policies and procedures that you'd recommended the year before. So in, in your audit, did you see any evidence that, that the town is at least taking the first step to establish policies and procedures? And also even yes or no, how, how long would that typically take and what you see?
Great question. Looking back, I think the way that the comment was written probably should have been crafted a little bit differently. As I had mentioned, there was a little bit of a transition period of going from the old software to the new. And I think that's where there might be a missing piece here because the hope was to looking at the, really the full capabilities of a system and what that was going to offer. And in, in talking with Doreen and talking with Russ, I, you know, I think that the hope was to create something that wasn't as boilerplate as many communities have. And I'd not say it's wrong, but I think when talking about policies and procedures, it's looking at something that you can continue to build off of. Policy, in my opinion, policies and procedures should always be continued to be reevaluated. But for this particular, for comment, I, I, I think it would probably take, you know, two years to get something that is more of a working file, if you will. It's not something that I think should be slapped together to check the box, just because it's a critical revenue stream. So to be fair, I, I don't think it's something that, even though I said it, it is a housekeeping item. In, in an effort to build that product, I, I do think it's going to take some time just because pulling it together is, it's a lot of work, to be fair. So I, but if, if, if you're asking me to put a number on it, I, I'd probably call it. As I say, two years, maybe, you know, between a year and two years, I'd probably say.
That's fair enough, but obviously next year, when you come back, you're expecting to see something that's been done.
Certainly that, and it's going to even go back to, you know, understanding, even in further detail, what folks in finance have, have understood about the system and continuing to work with them and evaluating what internal controls are replaced. Because it's not, it's not just going to be a focus on, on the policy and procedures. But yes, to answer your question, hopefully there will be a first step. I think that's what's key is you got to take that first step and then from there, continue refining and scrutinizing. But I think understanding the capabilities of the system is a critical piece.
Great, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Boyd from the board? Selectwoman Gilman, did you have anything? See your hand up.
Yeah, I'd just like to thank you for this presentation because I think in all my years sitting here, that one was the one I understood the most. So it was very clear and I appreciate the work by our finance director, Ms. Chester, and your work to produce this document and give us a really clear explanation of what we're doing well and where we still need to have a little bit of growth, but what those numbers mean, not just, you know, fix that. It was really a good, a good presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I certainly appreciate that. And just to echo that, you know, Russ and Doreen, thank you for, you know, we had, we had a closing conversation, I think really helped with, with this discussion. So in just talking with you folks, we have a really active group here. So thank you for, for letting me present tonight. And I apologize, I, I probably went a little bit longer than many people were hoping here. But thank you for, for listening to me and giving me this opportunity. I certainly appreciate that.
No, thank you, Mr. Boyd. And it was not, it was, it was very thorough and it was presented in a way that it was easy to understand. One last question, and it may be more for Mr. Dean, but I'll, I'll ask it to both of you. Understanding the way the library works with the Board of Trustees and the RSA, you know, and I, and I get all that. But some of the bullet points are a little alarming, particularly access to the cash box not being limited. And then, you know, the, the receipts of which you spoke. Even though the RSA is there and the Board of Trustees, is there anything as a town that we can be doing to either be a resource for them or kind of guide them or, you know, what, what can we be doing, Mr. Boyd and Mr. Dean, to try to make some improvements here?
Maybe before Ed speaks, I will say that every time we do, we have an audit, if something comes up like this, like a library issue, we alert them to it for sure. And definitely connect them with the auditors and offer them the support to make the adjustment that is needed to make sure that that, you know, gets addressed in the next management letter. So we, we definitely do that. So I'll, I'll leave it there. Maybe Ed wants to weigh in a little bit on it.
No, I think that's a good, good way to, to look at it. And, and I believe through, through Doreen this year too, reaching out to the library. I think one thing that we're going to facilitate is, you know, they were certainly open to, to looking, making improvements. So I think what we're going to try to facilitate is some communication between us and them to, just to understand best practices and even take library and town aside. It's just something that should be looked at because these areas can improve. And I, I think that they were open to that. But I, I think that's really the next step. And, you know, I'm happy to help in the capacity that I can as, as the town's auditor to, to help facilitate that discussion, where to go from here.
Great. Doreen Chester, your hand is up.
Yes, so just to reiterate something that Ed said, I did call the, the library and spoke to the director. And the responses that are in the management letter from the town for the library in particular, were answered by the library director, just so you're aware.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? Well, Doreen, thank you and your staff for your participation in helping Mr. Boyd. Mr. Boyd, obviously thank you to you and your staff for this, for this report.
My pleasure, thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay. Moving on to COVID nineteen updates, Mr. Dean, before we get into town staff and you weighing in, I think we have Selectwoman Roundtree Olaf wanted to talk about contract tracing. And also Selectman Brown had something that he wanted to discuss. So respectively, I'm going to ask them to, to speak first and Selectwoman Roundtree Olaf, I'll turn it over to you.
Thanks, Karen. I just wanted to bring up some conversation points that I had with some local businesses who are running into issues, trying to figure out the best method for collecting data on patrons. So especially for smaller businesses, coffee shops that fall into the restaurant umbrella. I don't know if it's something that we can do or assist them with, where we can maybe create a streamlined system for helping these restaurants and smaller food-related businesses. Because now they're mandated to do it. And so, you know, I think for a lot of them, we're also having just difficulty right now with business in general, adding this new layer of work and complexity can be, can be a little troubling. So I don't know if that's something that has been discussed or, you know, perhaps there's something that we can help them with QR codes. You know, whatever, whatever we can think about, I think it's, it's important for us to try to help these businesses.
And I'll just jump in just real quick and say that based on my experience that I had recently, I really want to defer to James on that because he was the one who really sort of went through the contact tracing piece. And I actually had a lot of questions myself about it. So maybe he's heard something from the state that can help us out with this one.
Sure. So I was working with Darren and Bob Glawacki on coming up with kind of a, a quick form that we could send out to restaurants, coffee shops, food establishments to help out with that. I have heard from the Food Protection Bureau that it is a requirement now that the restaurants are required to attempt to gather contact tracing information from their patrons. They need to know the approximate time that a, a party walks in, one member from the party's best contact information, the table or location where they're going to be seated, and the server bartender that's going to be serving them. Like I said, it was clarified, they need to make an attempt. If an individual or patrons refuses to give any information, then there's nothing they can do from there. They're not expected to go any further. They can refuse service if they'd like, but that's, that's not a requirement. They're not being asked to refuse service for someone that refuses to give contact information. So to that end, we drafted up a quick like Excel sheet to kind of at least give an idea to what the state was looking for. But other than that, it, it seems like they're just looking for some basic information from each table. And hopefully we can, we can assist our restaurants and food establishments with getting, getting that implemented.
Selectwoman Roundtree Olaf.
Did they happen to mention if credit card receipts will suffice as, as information, as a record-keeping?
I don't believe that was specified. I think technically you could, but I don't, I, I don't know the specifics on that, especially, you know, if it's okay to draw that information from a credit card or not.
Right. And also whether or not it matters if it's takeout or sit, or sit-in. So like if you're going to pick up a coffee and you're going to be in there, do you have to sit, you know, like, I think these are some of the questions that, that some of the restaurateurs that I've spoken to have. And it's unclear. And also, you know, as we had conversations about communications committee, this might be one of the topics that we can help the town understand a little bit better so that there isn't as much animosity when people are going into a restaurant and they're asked for their information. I think we can play a part in sort of easing that tension so that the restaurants aren't having, you know, the twenty-year-old at the counter is not having to explain why they're, they're needing a cell phone number or an email address or a mailing address.
Totally. I'm happy to work with the communications committee to answer that question. Takeout and counter service, you are not required to gather contact information, it's only for dine-in service.
Okay, great, thanks.
No, thank you, Selectwoman Roundtree Olaf, because that was a great question. And James, if we have local restaurants, local businesses that are interested in learning more, or should they contact you? Should they contact Darren through you? Or how, how should that work?
They can reach out to me directly. I'm happy to answer any questions as best as I can. New information is coming out. The Food Protection Bureau sent off a couple of emails last week clarifying things. So I'm, I'm learning as fast as I can as well.
Great, thank you. And, and do you know, and maybe Mr. Dean, this is a question for you. Has the economic developer taken any kind of a lead in terms of sending correspondence to these restaurants? That perhaps James could be a resource.
I know Darren's been very active with a lot of different issues with respect to all kinds of businesses. So I'd imagine he's had these conversations, but we can double check on that and make, you know, connect the dots on it. On this specific issue, we can, I don't know if he's been involved in this specific issue, but we can certainly get him involved. That's, that's no problem.
I could just add, we, working with James and Darren, we did send out the template we had for the contract tracing for restaurants out to the whole email list. And I can, we could, if we wanted, we could put it on the town website or something, if you wanted to download it there. But it was sent out to around nine hundred businesses, so.
Yeah, it would also be interesting to hear from restaurants and businesses that are already doing this. I know that a number of them are doing it and, and very seamlessly. So I think it'll be as much as we can be, as much as we can do to be helpful with the communications committee, the pieces that Bob just talked about and any other interactions that we can make to make it as smooth as possible. Be great.
Selectwoman Gilman?
Yes, I just wanted to ask similar to Selectwoman Cowan's question and Selectwoman Roundtree Olaf about giving the feedback, where does it go after the information is, is recorded? Does it go to James? And have, and have you, I know you've put it out there. Have you gotten feedback from food establishments about whether it's onerous or what you've done is really great for that, to help them?
So I haven't gotten any feedback yet. The food establishments don't give the information to me. They're to hold on to it. If the state contacts them, that they're looking into an outbreak that they believe that facility is involved with, they would give that information to the state. They do discard the information. After so many days, I don't have that number of days off the top of my head right now.
Thank you. So Mr. Dean, maybe at our next meeting, if we can, I don't know that Darren necessarily has to be here, but maybe if we could just get an update, that would be great. Okay, thank you, Selectwoman Roundtree Olaf.
Thank you.
Selectman Brown?
Yep, I just had a point of information about well-person checks, well-child checks. One of residents in town is a family resource counselor in Concord or Manchester, I believe. And she was sort of running me through the scenarios of entering the winter months and, you know, what we're doing to, you know, help or just intervene. So you've got three stages of mental health, which is early intervention or prevention, early intervention in crisis. And DCYF and agencies like that tend to focus on crisis more so. And now, you know, we've sort of been in crisis mode for many families in town. And so it's sort of a general question again, like what are we? We need to open the discussion about how the town is handling well-person checks, well-child checks. We've had closed doors for upwards of nine months now, where shelter in place is a great idea. Safer at home is a great idea, except for people for whom home is not the safest place. So really just to reach out to fire, rescue, police, possibly like what is our protocol for well-person, well-child checks?
Mr. Dean?
Yeah, so I was going to just at least start the conversation. I don't know if Public Safety wants to add to it. But as you know, my assistant Pam is the Human Services Administrator. And so she interfaces with a lot of our local agencies. I think Daryl just actually asked a great question. It's been the subject of our COVID calls with the hospital and other agencies. Those happen every other Thursday, Daryl. So if you're interested in joining those, let me know. They're every other Thursday at two o'clock. They're hosted by the hospital. And they, and they talk about a lot of these kinds of issues. And trying to, they bring in different speakers and different agencies and trends and things like that. So that's definitely a resource to tap into, to get some information about what's happening in this area. And also, you know, I'll put the question out to Pam as far as her interfacing with different agencies like maybe Seacoast Mental Health or others that are doing outreach. But this has been a big topic that we've been talking about on a number of different fronts. And I was going to refer to a call I had with Dr. Ryan last week where we spent an hour talking about a number of different things, including that piece. So it's, it's really at the forefront of a lot of people's thought processes right now. But the activity, I think, is probably taking place more on the human service agency side at this point. But we'll have to get more information for you. But it's a great, it's a great point, a great question.
Thanks, Mr. Dean. I'd be happy to sit in on that Thursday at two. So yeah, if you could.
Great. I'll talk to the hospital about adding you to the invite list. I'm sure they'd like to do that.
Thanks.
Chief Wilking, did you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, I just follow up with Russ. I, I think, I think Daryl asked a great question. And fire, rescue does get involved. Not a week goes by that we haven't received a call for a well-being check. And sometimes we're there early and we can, you know, help and make an assessment. Often a loved one hasn't been spoken to for a week or more. And we go out and then do a door-to-door and find out that there's a legitimate reason, you know, the phone doesn't work or whatever. And other reasons, you know, it's legit that, that there are definite concerns in the household. Often it's a single resident in the house, you know, I don't want to paint a picture that it's, you know, that it's all, you know, family members in crisis. But a very lonely, single individual that perhaps isn't eating well and taking care of themselves. There is a reporting mechanism, we are required to report that. And often we find out when we do that, that, that a VNA or another agency has already intervened. And they love the corroborating information and we're going to be part of the solution to that. We also respond to the crisis and, and that is unfortunate. And we have seen an uptick in, in some of that as well in Exeter. And Daryl, you're absolutely right. Many people have been shut in, locked in, spending more time at home with people that, that perhaps they don't want to be with that amount of time. So, and again, that same reporting. uh, and again, that same reporting mechanism is there um through uh D H P S in the hospital. Um, when we uh do treat a patient, there are requirements that, that we follow through. Um, but you bring up a good point. If we can catch things early uh and, and Pam is right on the forefront, that's absolutely where we want to be. Unfortunately, I find myself leading a group that we, we tend to be more reactive. Um, and we get the second and third phase more than the, than the, than the prevention side. And we all need to do a better job. So I'll be more happy to, to sit in on and listen to you that as well and as we can get into that solution.
Thank you. So it sounds like it would be Pam is early into, and Pam would be in the prevention scope. You've experienced early intervention to crisis, or would it be, would you shift that? Is Pam more early intervention or? You've definitely handled, yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think Russ may answer it better, but, but I know, I, I know Pam can receive calls for people that, that need assistance and help. Uh, where I think it would be better is if people had an opportunity to reach out uh in, in an effort to help their neighbor and, and, and reach out earlier, not later, you know, and rather than 10 days or two weeks that they haven't heard from somebody. If, if somebody hasn't picked up the mail or, or seems to hasn't left their home or, or just generally things are different in the, in the neighborhood of the household. Neighbor helping neighbor, reach out to anyone, whether it's us at the firehouse or the police department. We'll send a unit out. There'll be no lights and siree, no fanfare. We love the horns by Russell's office, but, but you know, we can do a, you know, a great deal. We can go out and do a welfare check and there's very little fanfare. And uh, if it's all good, we leave and, and uh, oh boy, it's, it's nice if we can help somebody or or any of us in, in that organization helps somebody early, that's better. And I think Pam is going to take many of those calls, but to that end, talking through Bob Blawacki and, and, and all the communication, people just know they can reach out and, and, and uh, you know, don't rat out their neighbor. Don't feel like they're, they're doing something wrong, but do something positive and we can intervene or at least offer assistance way earlier.
Yeah, we do that all the time out of our office here. We triage, we uh get agencies involved and depending upon what the circumstances are and what's happening uh and what the particular issue might be, uh, we have a long list of uh agencies that we interface with on a regular basis. So it's just a matter of understanding what the, what the issue is, but, and we're not necessarily always somebody's first stop too. If somebody's agency savvy, they may have another resource, but you have Service Link or the two one one system, uh, different opportunities to get agencies involved. So that's what we're doing all the time if we get, if we get wind of or somebody calls in, a neighbor may call in with a concern, something like that. We, we do a lot of that on a, on a fairly regular basis.
Good, good. Thanks. It sounds like I have a lot to learn here, but this is good.
You're not alone.
Select woman Brown, thank you for the question and bringing the point up. Well, chief, since you've got the floor, why don't you?
Sure. Well, as, as we reported two weeks ago, um, I'm sure you all follow the news. Things aren't looking any better in the great state of New Hampshire and certainly Rocky County and Exeter following suit. Um, the numbers are just, uh, they're the worst we've seen since we started the pandemic. And uh, I think when I, I caught a loop of the news earlier tonight at five, we're either at four or five days in a row, this state is, has seen over 200 positive tests and uh, and there's no end in sight. So to Daryl's end, I, I think we're in this for the long haul. Uh, we all love to see uh a change on the horizon and we can certainly hold out hope. But the general consensus is um, we need to really protect one another, use really good common sense with the social distancing, a mask to try to keep our numbers down. Uh, Exeter alone had 21 residents test positive in the last two weeks, another milestone. Uh, we spoke when you were first, you know, considering the mask ordinance, we're around 15 and now we're up over 20. Um, I do want to paint a picture of positivity. Exeter is one of the 20 largest towns in the state of New Hampshire by population. And of that group of 20, there are only two communities, one in the far western part of the state and one way up north that, that have fewer numbers than Exeter. Exeter of the top 20 has by far the fewest numbers of positive, you know, residents in all of the southern tier. And we just broke 100. I think we're at 103 residents. And uh Hampton has more. All the communities have more, obviously the logic, the largest cities, but of those top 20, there are only two people, two communities that have better numbers than Exeter. Better or worse? How do you want to paint that picture? Fewer positive tests. So what we're doing is working, what, what, you know, keeping the mask ordinance, keeping this on the forefront. Don't let our guard down. We talk about COVID fatigue. We've all got it. This can't end soon enough. But that being said, everything we're doing is making a difference. So we all need to understand we're, we're part of that solution. Now we are making a difference. Um, things are happening at the state level where um I'm in talks right now and with the uh Seacoast, uh, the region public health network. Um, we're establishing sites in preparation for the hopes of a vaccine. So we're not, you know, scrambling when it's, when it's approved. Um, we have three, identified three sites in our region that will be used as a drive through model for folks who have received the vaccine. Um, I, I know officially things haven't come out, but I will paint you a picture that it sounds a lot like uh healthcare workers, first responders, the most vulnerable in our population, including those over 65, will very likely be the early recipients of a vaccine. Um, from there, it'll continue to go out into, you know, the general public. Um, so we are identifying those sites while the ones in Exeter and then uh local communities, we're, we're working to um MOAs and then we'll use to make sure that those remain available. The last initiative that's being rolled out uh is, is through the state level. They've come up with an initial that they're nicknamed Frost, or First Responder Optional Screening Test. They're using the antigen test on large numbers and they're looking to see if the first responder network, fire, police and EMS uh can be part of that. Um, it takes a commitment. The word optional is there. One doesn't have to do it. Uh, but an agency can. Uh, we've looked into it. Uh, Chief Heizon has uh, has worked with CMS, so the Center for Medicaid, Medicare Services. We had to apply for license to do it. But in a nutshell, what they're looking to do is offer monthly testing to all of our personnel using the, the quick rapid antigen test. Anybody that would test positive to that would then immediately move to a PCR or more definitive test. And if that were, uh, if that test supported the antigen test, that employee would come offline, be isolated, quarantined, subject to all of the the normal things as well as uh there'd be contact tracing of who they've been involved with. If the PCR test does not corroborate the rapid test, the employee stays right at work and, and just self monitors. So so there are initiatives statewide moving on. Um, we obviously haven't committed to that. That's a decision we collectively, Russ, you and me all will be making together. Um, but it's out there and we didn't want to be caught behind and, and not part of it. So uh, we've uh, we stepped up and done what we need to prepare. Uh, and more information hopefully will follow soon on the timing of that and, and what we're going to do. But it does seem to have a positive uh, a positive thought process. Sometimes, you know, you don't want to hear bad news, but I'd rather have bad news early than, than, than later. So that being said, uh, I, I think we're looking into that more and well, there'll be quite a comment at a future meeting.
Thank you. Any questions for Chief Wolden? I don't see any. So again, thank you, chief.
Well, I know James had something too, and I hope I didn't rain on his parade too much.
All right, James.
Sure, just to piggyball, piggyback off what the chief was saying. Uh, I did reach out to Mary Cook with the Seacoast Public Health Network today. Uh, she gave me some general information about um the plans the state has for vaccines. Like the chief said, uh, SST was identified as a potential site, depending on um, you know, what types of vaccines we'll be getting and who they'll be able to give it to. By her estimate, about 25% of the vaccines that come down to the state will be given to government entities, including the public health network. So um 75% would go to healthcare providers, federal qualified uh health centers, things like that. But we'd be looking at at least 25% of those for government entities. I don't know what percent of that 25% would go to Seacoast Public Health Network. How much uh that would look like in real numbers for vaccines we would get, but um, you know, they're identifying sites. Uh, they're starting to work through logistics. We don't know a whole lot of details about what vaccines they'd be working with, what kind of like refrigeration might be necessary, that kind of thing. And um how we would work it out if there needed to be a second dose, but I'll be working with her going forward on um kind of establishing where and how we would get that going and uh what individuals we'd be targeting to uh get them, get them vaccinated.
Great, thank you. Any questions for James? Terrific. Thank you both. Melissa, do you have anything from Parks and Rec?
Um, I'm going to let Greg talk about basketball.
Oh, Greg's, Greg's here. There he is. Two meetings at once, Greg.
I, we, we quickly got in and out of budget, so I appreciate Bob Kelly and all the, the B R C for allowing us to go first. So uh, yes, uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. Uh, in your packet, you will see a proposal. Uh, we have been working with James on kind of coming up with a concept using the youth sports uh guidelines that the state has. Even though, as Eric said, the numbers tend to be rising, we, I think we've taken our proposal and the guidelines and gone a step above that. Uh, we ran these guidelines, uh, this proposal by our Rec Advisory Board as well. And they uh, they voted unanimously to present it to you as a board. So just to walk you through uh, some of the things, it's a similar model that we did in the fall where we're going to the skills and drills uh aspect of it to kind of keep the spread from going so that teams aren't playing multiple uh scrimmages a week. Uh, that I think in alone itself helps minimize the spread in case a COVID hit happens on a certain team. But we've taken it above and beyond that. Uh, we are recommending that no spectators are going to be in the stands. So the kids would come in and get dropped off. So there'll be no parents uh sipping their cup of coffee, watching their kids, because honestly, they're going to watch your kids practice. I, I'm not really sure if that's too entertaining. But also the kids and the coaches are going to have to wear masks uh because basketball is a little more close proximity to each other. Having them wear the mask, uh, we don't feel that is really a health hazard. Uh, and then limit the use of gym. One of the things that we are really uh cognizant about is having a very limited amount of kids and not having that turnover. So one team would be practicing or playing quote unquote in the main street school gym per night. Usually we have two to four, depending on how many uh teams would be signed up. And Lincoln Street, the maximum of two uh per uh, per gym with the divider separating them. So it's not going to be uh too strenuous. If we can spread it out, depending on the number of people that register, we would limit one. They'd go through all the health protocols as, as recommended. Uh, we'd have uh everyone bring their own basketball as recommended, and we'd have one specific game ball that would be sanitized uh after the use. And anyone that couldn't afford a basketball, we would have basketballs provided as, and our gym supervisor would be sanitizing them as well. Uh, this isn't ideal, but we've made, made them into micro sessions. So we want to be starting until at uh, until Martin Luther King Day. Uh, one of the things that we have always done is start in December. Obviously, we're not going to do that. We want to give time. So if we would need to make that ultimate decision not to run the program, we can make that in a timely manner uh depending on how the health numbers are. Because our number one goal is keeping the kids in school, because I know a lot of kids went back to school today in Exeter and we want to uh continue to do that. And uh, we'd go on and, and, and really keep it isolated. So five weeks, we'd build in uh some uh extra time in case a team would need to uh pause the season. So, and then the second session would start later. And those dates are flexible, of course, because one of the things, as we always say, the new term fluid in this, uh, all the things are fluid. So we want to make sure we give that built in. And that way we provide an alternative uh program for the youth to play. We did survey uh approximately uh 150 people responded to our survey with 90% wanting to participate in uh basketball once a week with the strict thing. So the numbers are there. Will we get that? Maybe not, but at least it's an opportunity for them to uh participate. And some kids did stay remote. So that's could give an opportunity for them to also uh get out there and socialize. So that's one of our proposals. I'm open to questions and uh I think Melissa David and I uh put a lot of thought into this and hopefully we can move forward.
So Greg, just uh in case I missed it, the S A U 16 has permitted the use of the two gyms?
Yes. Uh, yep, uh, they are gonna be reevaluating it depending on what the numbers are in the schools and everything. But with that, uh, Mr. Chair comes uh an added cost. One of the things that the S A U 16 has uh done, and this is one of the only S A U's around that has openly opened the gym. Uh, is there's a uh sanitation cost this year. Usually in past, it was, we had free use of any of the gyms. This year it'll be a $75 charge per night, uh, which will be, they'll bring in a fogger and they'll fog it in between the after school program that uh runs before us and our program. So there'll be plenty of time to sanitize. So when we go in there, it is sanitized. So we do have access currently, but as uh things could change depending on the numbers.
Select woman Ratriolus?
Thank you. I was just wondering, uh, the, the survey that you did, were those to previous players or?
Uh, yes, that should have been sent out to the previous players. Did you not get one, Lovey?
No, I didn't. I was wondering about that. Actually, I had a question about the um, do you remember we talked about, I think on the 19th?
Yep.
That they were going to try to have an opt in for everybody who had been members or had been active in uh Parks and Rec before?
Uh, yeah, we, we looked into it. We're having a hard time getting that data out of our, because it's not like we can pull from just everyone. We'd have to pull individual ones and some of them have been archived. So we are working on that. I've been working with our, our software company. So we're hopefully have that downloaded.
Did, did the S A U um send out that information to students as well, or was that just from your most recent players?
I was from last year's players.
Okay, thank you.
So actually, Greg, select woman Ratriolus brings up a good point. I know in regular times, don't you have flyers that usually go home with the kids? I mean, they're, they're given to, I mean, I know my kids have come home with flyers. Is there a way that maybe we can electronically do that?
Yeah, we were waiting to send out a flyer until you approved it. Melissa is, is great at all the graphic designs and uh we, we would want to focus, because as you know, we've been focusing on a lot of programming ourselves. So uh, if that's something that we have moved forward to, we'll put together a flyer that we'll send out through the schools. Because the reason we're coming to you so early and having such a, it'll be two months before it actually starts. It gives us plenty of time to advertise this instead of the last couple of times where regulations have been coming in last second and we've been scrambling to try to get these seasons uh off the ground.
Great. Select woman Ratriolus, did you have another question? Okay. Greg, what if, if this was approved and you started it in late January and sometime between the, the start and the end, there was a a breakout in either Main Street or Lincoln Street, not enough to close school, but enough that, you know, enough kids were quarantined. Um, do you have any sort of a plan in place as to whether or not you would suspend if a certain number of students within the school had tested positive?
Uh, yes, it, we would, we would suspend activities uh for the two weeks to allow that, depending on which age group, uh, Mr. Chair. If it's uh the older kids, the third through uh sixth grade, I believe is at Lincoln Street, we would pause that one. Middle school, same thing. So it's broken up where we can pause them to allow those kids to quarantine. And having a built in buffer at the end allows them to make it up. So they're not losing out, uh, but also keeping them safe.
Okay. And where's the extra cost coming from? How's that being paid?
Uh, where the nice thing with this format, Mr. Chair, is we have less uh expenses. So uh, we're do, we're, we're running numbers now and I uh, I estimate we'll be about the same cost as a typical in-house program that we run, not our travel. Our travel is above and beyond, but we're trying to keep it as affordable as possible, uh, knowing that it is a shortened season. There's so much uncertainty to it. And that's why breaking up into two little micro sessions, they might, they might be able to get a full eight, 10 weeks in if they do both of them. So uh, So we're gonna look at that to keep them affordable. So that's unfortunately, the end user will have to pay those costs. But I think we're saving money on not having referees, we're not getting basketball shirts, which are really expensive. We're not paying for a lot of overtime because we're trying to stay away from Saturdays as well. On top of that is the $35 per hour overtime that we pay. So in hopefully setting this up and getting the numbers, we'll be able to keep that cost affordable.
Selectwoman Ratriolov?
Just one more question. You know, based off of Chief Wilking's presentation, is there a number that is on the table where if we get to a certain percentage of positive cases, that the program automatically stops?
We haven't discussed that yet. That's something that we could definitely discuss and have that number.
I just think that, you know, if the conversation is had upfront, especially for families, then they can sort of plan accordingly, they can think also wisely about some of the risks that they run. And also financially speaking, whether or not they refunded their money, you know, those kind of protocols set up in advance so that there aren't any surprises to people.
Sure.
Any other questions for Greg and Melissa? So you're looking for approval this evening?
Yes, please.
Okay. If there are no other questions or discussion, then I would look to entertain a motion to approve the Exeter Parks Recreation 2021 Winter Basketball Program as outlined in the Parks and Rec November 9th, 2020 memo. So moved. Motion, the second for the discussion? Madam Clerk?
First, I have to apologize for blanking out for a while, my battery went dead. Apparently it wasn't as plugged in as I thought, so I'm using two devices right now. Let me go forward, Selectwoman Brown?
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan?
Selectwoman Cowan?
I'm thinking.
Shall I move on and come back to you? You said yes?
No, I'll vote aye, but I am wildly uncomfortable with community spread the way it is.
You don't have to vote aye.
Selectwoman Ratriolov?
Aye.
And the clerk says aye, Mr. Chair?
The chair says aye with the understanding that the Parks and Rec are going to carefully monitor the entire situation and suspend when it's time to, if it's time to. So the motion passes. Any other updates from Parks and Rec?
Two things, Mr. Chair. First is look for our new programming, we're finalizing it. We know some people are apprehensive going out and so if they don't want to participate, we are on the cutting edge of actually joining an esports league. So those that like the game and want to do it in a safe environment and play other kids from around the state in a monitored activity, this is a great opportunity, we're looking to join, it's called the GG League is the vendor. So that is something that we're gonna be rolling out fairly shortly, so look for that. First season starting in January as well. And a big thanks to you, Mr. Chair, and a bunch of volunteers that made our Halloween parade a huge success. I think with, it was a combined effort between Public Works, Police, Fire and Parks and Rec that really went around and for anyone that wanted, we went through 27 miles of the community. So we would love to do more, but unfortunately, time is of the essence. And depending on what the temperature is, we, hopefully you weren't too frozen at the end of it, Nico. But it was a great opportunity and I was very thrilled to see so many happy people and the face of the kids light up and the student body really getting into their Zoom zombie mode at the end. It was really great.
Yes, and I was coerced into dressing up. You both, you Melissa and David actually did a tremendous job and kudos to the Rec Advisory Committee, but also to committee member Dan Provost who put together the Zoom zombie float with a bunch of the high school kids. That was amazing. And again, thank you to the Police Department and the Fire Department. There were a lot of people out, it was a cold, sunny but cold afternoon. And there were a lot of folks out over the course of 27 miles. And there's one citizen in particular who drove and we saw him at three different points during the parade. He enjoyed it so much the first time, so well done and thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Mr. Dean?
Coming in hot here. So I mentioned my call with Dr. Ryan and I know many of you who are, if you have elementary school children, you know that the kids went back today to Lincoln Street and Main Street schools. And Dr. Ryan and I, actually when we talked, we had a really good conversation about COVID-19 and sort of the approach that they're taking. And one of the more interesting comments he made to me was that I could report on is that, you know, within the schools themselves, it's been pretty successful keeping COVID out. But what the issues you run into is the broad swath of people outside the circle. So parents and things like that, that they don't really, they can't control what happens with them and where they go. So I just thought that that was a pretty interesting observation, something that they're grappling with. Chief Wilking mentioned the weekend work. Again, we had a situation this past weekend, early morning, where we got confirmation of a positive case. It wasn't one of our employees, but it was one of an agency that does business with us here in the town on site. So we are doing our own contact tracing on that with James and expecting a couple of employees to get tested or one employee right now to get tested on that. And we are waiting that test to come back, so hopefully that works out okay. There was a direct exposure there, so. But like all of them, it's hard to tell how directed it is, may indicate, you know, whether you're more vulnerable to COVID. So we're working our way through that. And on another front, DocuSign, I know there was a lot of interest in getting that. We do have it, it's onboard. And we are in the process of beginning to experiment with it a little bit, just to kind of come up to speed on it. But we do have, we do have it available and so we'll be working hard to integrate it into our operations. It does seem to work really well, gives us a good chance to increase our efficiencies as well. So we're gonna work on that. And then tomorrow morning, I actually have a Zoom meeting with all the department heads to talk about. There are several towns out there that are sort of reassessing where they are with remote work and sort of the what-if scenarios and working through if buildings needed to be not closed, but again, sort of limited access to the public if numbers really continue to increase into the winter and what that looks like. And we're having a reassessment meeting tomorrow just to kind of come back to that issue of if there was a need to go remote or there was a decision to go remote, would we provide, you know, what would we be able to provide for equipment, making sure everybody has what they need and so forth? Because one of the things, we definitely heard, unlike March, which was more of a sort of an emergency situation, right now, we're sort of thinking it through with, okay, if workers need to go remote, they need a town-issued laptop, so they're not using their own equipment at home. They need, you know, they may need a webcam, they may need a phone. And when we were in the sort of phase one on this, we were doing it a little bit more sort of off the hip a little bit, right? So we were trying to react, but people were very good about using their own equipment. But I think if we're gonna go back into that mode at some point in a more regular way, we need to be providing more of the equipment. So we're working our way through that. And we did provide some, we just didn't cover everybody. But again, they were very flexible with us when this first happened and used a lot of their own home stuff to do work for the town. So, and I think that's it, it's just it's a day-to-day. We were always hearing more things day-to-day. We've handled a couple of complaints through our office about masks. One was by a resident who lives nearby, nearby Lainey and Lou's, talking about people walking through his property unmasked. That was a problem, apparently quite a few people. So we asked James to take that one on and then we've received the odd complaint here and there from people about student runners not being masked, a couple of other issues that we've had to handle. So, day-to-day.
Thank you for your update. Any questions or comments, or Mr. Dean from the board? Okay, seeing none, we can move on to regular business. We don't have any abatements, credits or exemptions. Mr. Dean, I know we have, we have a memo in our packet regarding sales ratio survey and then also something that we need to sign, but do we need to vote on anything? Or do you want to just give a brief overview?
No, those were put in the packet more for memorializing them. I do believe the certification form that's included with the sales ratio survey has to be filled out and signed by the board. Maybe we can experiment with that with DocuSign and see if we can get that to work. So we'll give it a shot. And then the MS1 has already been submitted and accepted, it's just in the packet more for informational purposes.
And we have a memo from DPW Director Perry on the drought condition. And they recommend continuing the restriction to level four banning the outdoor watering. And I think when she was last on, she anticipated that would go through the first part of 2021, correct?
I believe so, we've had more rain, but it's still status quo at this point.
Let's see, Town Managers Report, I think you just pretty much gave it, but?
Believe it or not, there's more. Tax rate setting, we're really working hard to try to get the tax rate set. We've had some hiccups with DRA. Usually we do have our tax rate set by this point in time and we hope to hear in the next couple of days some information about that. We are planning to use the same amount of fund balance that we anticipated against the tax rate. But we'll keep you updated as things unfold on that front. They seem to have all the forms in, so I'm hoping in the next couple of days it gets set. Once the tax rate is set, we know it will notify the board and it's usually about a three to four day gap between the time the rate is set and the bills go out. We already know the county rate's going down, I'm not sure about the school. But the numbers I see indicate there may be some change in that downward. But I don't want to commit to that because I need to confirm it. And then our rate is in the neighborhood of a 20 cent, probably a 18 to 20 cent change from 571 to 591 based on the town meeting votes. So that's sort of where we're sitting. So if everything held, it would be a very similar rate to last year, if not a little bit lower. The MS1 is about a 1.15% increase in assessed valuation. So we know the real estate market's hot, continues to be hot and values are up. This Wednesday is Veterans Day, so town offices are closed, just to remind everybody. We will be off that day and hopefully everybody can get involved with their favorite veteran and thank them and for all their service, but Wednesday we will be closed. We'll be back on Thursday for Budget Recommendations Committee, it's the water sewer budget that night. Planning Board's also meeting that night, so in talking with IT about it, my recommendation was that the Planning Board go actually on the live stream and the BRC be recorded for playback, you know, later on. So that's that. Just a quick personnel note, Nils Larson, one of our wastewater treatment operators, has been moved into the senior operator position. I think you remember Jennifer Perry coming through with that organizational change and so forth. So he's assumed that position, so I think she's got all of her ducks in a row out there at the wastewater facility, which is good. We also extended the outdoor dining to December 31st, 2020, so that's in the, it's done. And wishing our restaurants well with that. Luckily, the weather's been warm, so that's been, that's been great to help, try to help them in their situations. And then legal is working with us. We got a petition to acquire a title for a piece of property out near Sanborn Street and Walter Mitchell and Laura Spector have been working with Public Works on that. I can get more information if the board members are interested, but we have, we're just working through a process because there's a piece of town-owned property that is nearby that's involved, that may provide us access for certain things, so we're looking at it. I'll be that general, but if you want more details, you know, definitely reach out to me and we can get those for you. And I think that's it, unless there are any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Dean, any questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to Select Board Committee Reports. Selectwoman Brown?
I did not attend the facilities committee and they don't have minutes up yet, so in tomorrow's Communications Committee.
Great, thank you. Selectwoman Ratriolov?
No housing committee meeting last week and the minutes for the Swayze Parkway have not been posted.
Okay. Selectwoman Cowan?
Well, you heard the detailed discussion about the Rec Advisory Committee. We did have a very detailed discussion about the video game league that we're talking about. There are some concerns about equity and the cost because the initial, the cost to join is very low, but then you do have to actually have the equipment. And, you know, what does that look like in terms of letting people have access to play? But yeah, that was it.
Okay, great, thank you. Selectwoman Gilman? You're muted. You're still muted.
I think she's on her first.
Yeah, yeah. Well, we can, oh, there she is.
There we go, thank you host. I didn't have any meetings except for the Heritage Commission. We had a discussion about, with the Park Street area neighborhood, I mean area, about creating a heritage neighborhood district, which is not a historic district commission. But there were a lot of questions, we're gonna try it again because there were a lot of questions. We want to get more. We were just trying to get a feel if people were interested in the theory and we had sent out all the materials or connection to them. They're on the town's website for the Heritage Commission page if you want to read it. And there was nothing else, the election outpouring of voters is great. And I have an HDC meeting on Thursday.
Terrific, thank you. The Sustainability Committee was postponed because it was scheduled for the election day. So presumably we'll just meet again the first of December. And that wraps up the Select Board Committee Reports, we've moved to correspondence. Mr. Dean, the first one was from Director Perry regarding the Swambskut River Siphons. Can you speak to that briefly?
Sure, I will. Before I do, I just wanted to also congratulate Selectwoman Gilman on being re-elected to the state legislature this past Tuesday. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Top the ticket again, I saw. I believe.
Don't jinx me. Don't jinx me.
So yes, we, in the Swambskut River Siphons project, we have, we have had some leakage from a pipe that is at the Webster Station. So Director Perry let me know about it, they're actually getting some emergency repairs done on that because they're looking at some options right now, actually, for remediation and repair. But she wanted to let me know that that was happening. There were some two-inch size holes in the bottom of one of the pipes at the Webster Station. So they discovered that after they were doing some jet cleaning of the pipes. So since it was a release, she wanted to let me know and make sure that you knew as well, that they're working to fix that.
Thank you. The next correspondence was an email we received from a Stratum resident. And Mr. Dean, I'd asked you to reach out to PEA and also the Police Department. I don't know if you were able to do so yet and if so, you could give us a quick update or if you want to revisit that on the 23rd?
Yeah, I need to, that's an item on my to-do list still. So, but I definitely will get in touch with Principal Ross and about this to find out what. get in touch with Principal Rossin about this to find out what the what the situation is, and also talk with the chief. I'll put that on my list for this week, for sure.
We'd like to have an update at the next meeting if we can.
Yes.
Um, the next piece is, Mr. Dean, again, with virtual town meetings.
My favorite subject.
Yes.
We do need to talk about deliberative sessions soon, or the or the virtual town meeting alternate version, but that's for another another night. But we will need to talk about it fairly soon.
And not to hold up the meeting, but has the NHMA come out with any recommendations yet?
Uh, I don't believe they have, but I will follow up with Margaret Burns and ask that question, because that's a that's a very good question.
Okay, because I would think they'd be a good resource.
Right.
Um, and then also, our health trust is holding their annual board elections. Are you up for reelection?
I am. I'm up again.
Great. Well, it's it's good to have you on that. So good luck. I hope that that works. And some work opportunities in the Seacoast region from the Exeter Chamber of Commerce. And last was an email written to you, Mr. Dean, regarding a social media post, and you'll take care of that for us?
Right.
It's fun. Thank you. Okay. Reviewing the board calendar, we are scheduled for November twenty-third, and I was looking out towards the rest of two thousand twenty. I can't believe it's almost over. And, Mr. Dean, it looked like we would be in line for December seventh and December twenty-first. Do you see conflicts there?
I do not have any particular conflicts for the seventh or twenty-first. I think as we go into the Thanksgiving holiday, that obviously will be the twenty-sixth, I think. And then coming, that's usually the conclusion of the BRC is around the seventeenth or eighteenth. So we sort of bounce back and forth. But yeah, the seventh and twenty-first seem to be fine.
I thought Bob could give his presentation on the seventh. That would give him ample time to get his report ready. And that's Bob Kelly, Chair of the BRC. And then the board could discuss it again on the twenty-first. And then that gives us another board meeting, at least one in January, before we go to the budget here.
Right, correct.
Any objections from the board on those dates? Any conflicts? All right. Seeing none, Mr. Dean, if we could get those in the books. And then I, too, would like to congratulate you, Selectwoman Gilman. I was waiting till the end of the meeting, but.
Sorry, Mr. Chair.
That's okay. Congratulations. Again, Happy Veterans Day to all of our veterans, all of our families are veterans. Thank you for your service. And last but not least, I would like to, and I should have done this when Paul and and Vicky were on, but just a real special thank you to Eileen Flockhart, who organized a group of some of our children in town to cut up, I voted stickers, to the tune of eight thousand stickers they cut up. And they did it over the course of like two or three days to get them ready for the voters. And as we all know, by standing at the by the exit, voters really do appreciate it. So I really want to thank Doug and Eileen Flockhart for doing that last minute. Thanks. Any additional comments from the board?
I will also congratulate Selectwoman Gilman on her victory.
Well, that's why I want to work with you on that virtual meeting thing, because that's the same discussion we're having at the state. So I can get informed from our view here to inform me how four hundred people can get together. But thank you. Thank you all.
Any other comments? And seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk?
Selectwoman Brown?
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan?
Aye.
Selectwoman Ratriolov?
Aye.
Clerk says aye, Mr. Chair?
Chair says aye. Meeting's adjourned. Thank you.